In session and good evening, Prata community. I hereby call to order the Prata Governing Board meeting at 6:04 PM. Today, Tuesday, September 28. For 2.2 Pledge of Allegiance, Tristee Delphine Polk, could you please lead us in the pledge?
Sure. Um, okay, are we ready?
Yes.
Okay, um, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, Tristee Polk. Let's move on to 2.3 Roll Call. Board Clerk. Student Tristee Hogan. Student Tristee Hogan, are you there? I don't think she's on. Okay, Student Tristee Cooper.
Present.
Tristee Withrow.
Here.
Tristee Jenkins.
Here.
Tristee Handy. Tristee Handy, I know you're there somewhere. I'll come back. Tristee Delphine Polk?
I'm here.
Oh, there you are.
Couldn't get it on me yet.
Thank you both. Tristee Bonilla?
Here.
Tristee Gonzalez-U N?
I'm right here.
Tristee Napolea Bella Reese?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, let's move on to the 2.4 Agenda Item, Affirmation of the Statement of Cooperation. Madam Board Clerk, can you post that so I can read it directly from the screen? Great. As per usual, we're going to start off with this as the framework for the meeting and as ground rules for the meeting. Number one, the board is continuing to work on trust in and among our members. Number two, we agree to listen and seek to understand others and opposing viewpoints with the expectation of good intentions and a deep commitment to the district's students. Number three, we commit to being prepared for each meeting and to work within our established communication protocols when we seek additional information. Members will review the agenda in advance of each meeting and adhere to Board Policy 2340 for adding items to the agenda. Number four, we have reviewed the board's code of ethics and commit to reviewing it annually at our organizational meeting to remind ourselves of the behavior we are to exhibit and the guidelines we are to follow in our role. Number five, if the code of ethics is violated, we commit to follow the process stated in the code and will first address concerns informally to settle disagreements one-on-one between and among members before moving to the formal process. Number six, we agree that from time to time, the Chair will remind members of appropriate behavior and may call for a recess or redirect to members if they stray from the topic of discussion. Number seven, we collectively recognize that it is within the duties and authority of the Chair to render decisions or take actions to keep our meetings on track in adherence to Board policy. And number eight, we will strive to fulfill the vision we have established for ourselves. And number nine, we will model the behavior we want others to exhibit. Thank you for that. Let's go to 2.5 Vice President Gonzalez-U N. Do we have a report of action taken in closed session?
We do. Madam President, at tonight's closed session, the board voted on the following items. Item 1.3 Public Employee Appointment. This was a recommendation to appoint Raymond Knox as Vice President of Student Services at Laney College. Annual salary of $167,167 effective October 11, 2021 through June 30, 2023. This position reports to the President of Laney College. The motion was made by Jolena Bonilla and seconded by Bill Withrow. And it was Ian, Ms. Polk, Withrow, Jenkins, Handy, Polk, Bonilla, myself, and President Napolea Bella Reese, zero noes, no abstentions. Um, madam, that concludes the readout for tonight. And if Raymond Knox is present, I would like to welcome you aboard and thank you for everything you're gonna do for the district. Uh, welcome along.
Welcome, welcome. Thank you for that. 2.6 Approval of the Agenda. May I have a motion for that?
Oh, move.
Thank you, Tristee Withrow. Thank you, Tristee Gonzalez-U N. 2.7 Approval of the Minute.
A point of clarification, President Napolea Bella Reese. Um, I would like to pull an item from the agenda. Um, if it is appropriate to do so?
Yes, yes.
Okay, um, I'd like to pull, um, the item, um, I'm trying to find the item number. Um, it is item number 9.2. It is the AB 361 item. Um, I'd like to pull it from tonight's agenda. We have received late information um, regarding the guidelines and after consulting with legal counsel, um, I found that we can adopt a resolution anytime after the 30 uh, day notice is given starting October the first, which is the deadline. And once we get further clarification, we will bring this back to the board for appropriate action.
Tristee, is that an appropriate amendment to the, to your motion?
Move.
Um, and that's acceptable to the secondor?
Thank you.
I think we need a vote on that before we move on.
We sure do. Student Tristee Hogan? I know she's here. I'll come back. Student Tristee Cooper?
Uh, yeah.
Tristee Withrow?
Yes.
Tristee Jenkins?
Yes.
Tristee Handy?
Yes.
Tristee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Tristee Bonilla?
Yes.
Tristee Gonzalez-U N?
Yes.
Tristee Napolea Bella Reese?
Yes.
Okay, Student Tristee Hogan, are you still there?
Yes.
There you go. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Let's move to 2.7 Approval of the Minutes. May I have a motion?
Move.
Thank you. Who was our second?
By Tristee Bonilla.
Tristee Bonilla, okay. Discussion? Roll call, please. Student Tristee Hogan?
Yes.
Student Tristee Cooper?
Yeah.
Tristee Withrow?
Yes.
Tristee Jenkins?
Yes.
Tristee Handy?
Yes.
Tristee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Tristee Bonilla?
Yes.
Tristee Gonzalez-U N?
Yes.
Tristee Napolea Bella Reese?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thanks.
Let's go to 2.8 Associated Student Government Reports. Do we have any student leaders in the room?
We do. We have Harry Mapadile. Um, and I will move him over to panelists now.
Thank you, Maisha.
You're welcome. Should be with us now.
Okay, hi, everyone. Um, in our last meeting, we, uh, approved our budget plan for the academic year. So budget for that, as A S B C is $18,000. We also in the same meeting got, uh, a club that requested funding and they requested around $1,000. So it was approved. So it's nice to see that the funding's being used already. Um, I also, uh, got an update from our Senator and A S B C about the Honor Council. And the Honor Council is a resource, it's gonna be a council to help educate students and to uh, introduce students to resources they have on campus at, uh, B C C. And, uh, applications for the Honor Council will be out in mid-October, I believe, or towards the end of October for students to join in this council and help students. And next week, we'll have Club Rush at the fifth and sixth, uh, on Tuesday and Wednesday from 12 to 1:00, we'll be having the Club Rush. Uh, so it'll be a good opportunity for, to, for, to have new clubs and as well as to get more of this funding spent as well and to have more student activity at B C C.
I have no guarantee.
And that's wonderful.
Thank you, Harry. Just a quick question, will the Club Rush be virtual or is it physical?
Ah, I wish it was physical. Um, it'll be virtual, yes.
It'll still be fun.
Yes, it will.
Thank you for that. Do we have any other student leaders, Maisha, or is Harry?
I do not see any and none were communicated to us.
Okay, thank you. Let's then move on to 2.9 Prata Classified Senate.
Good evening, everyone. Can everyone hear me?
We can, Terrence.
Okay, good evening, President Reese. Um, members of the Board of Trustees, Chancellor Jackson, Presidents, and guests. Tonight, we have two Classified Senate Campus Reports. The first report comes from the Berkeley City College Classified Senate. The Berkeley City College Classified Senate will be having its last meeting of the month on September 29th at 3:00 PM. At the, at the September 29th meeting, we will be discussing where we would like to focus our efforts for Flex Day workshops specific to classified professionals and recognizing an employee of the quarter. Classified professionals are continuing to support students remotely and look forward to doing so in the spring. The second report comes from the Laney College Classified Senate. The Laney Classified Senate invites all classified professionals to take part in the Town Hall meeting on October 4th at 10:00 AM to ensure our voices are heard for a safe return to campus and workspaces. Senate meetings take place every fourth Thursday at 3:00 PM. All are welcome. More information can be found on our webpage, laney.edu/classified_senate/. That is the end of the Campus Reports. Thank you very much for your support of the Prata Classified Senate.
Thank you.
Thank you, Terrence. Let's go to 2.10 District Academic Senate Report.
Good evening, uh, President Napolea Bella Reese and members of Board Trustees, Chancellor Jackson, uh, Presidents and everyone else. Yes, um, I'd like to let people know that, uh, at the District Academic Senate, uh, last meeting, uh, we had a Brown Act presentation by the State, uh, excuse me, the State Senate uh, from, uh, one of the, uh, former Chairs of the Standards and Practices Committee. And it was a, uh, interesting discussion about, uh, the Brown Act. Uh, one of the things, every time I hear a different presentation, I'm always finding something, uh, different and interesting. Uh, this one was called Serial. Uh, and, and it's about violating the Brown Act. I happened to talk to one or two people who are on, members of our DAS. And they in turn talked to some other, or they in turn talked to some other people. And all are talking about a particular topic, uh, that could be construed as a violation. That was, uh, interesting to us. We hadn't been aware of that. So it was a really good discussion. Uh, we then had a discussion on the return to campus. There were, uh, any number of different questions and concerns, uh, that, uh, were expressed. Uh, and the, uh, District Academic Senate wanted me to port a, uh, a, um, letter to the Chancellor with those questions and the Chancellor responded back. Uh, I think that most faculty don't look at, uh, the, uh, announcements that come out, uh, come out in our emails. Uh, I think that, uh, faculty get so busy with their, uh, classes that I don't know if they really, uh, uh, read every single, uh, announcement. I think that the announcement had been coming regularly about the return to campus, but it's not all in one particular document. You have to go and search through that or search through the, uh, website. So I hope that when the Chancellor meets with everybody, uh, uh, at, uh, at the Town Hall, that she is able to then, uh, respond to those concerns and issues. I think, uh, different issues have been raised up, uh, at Chairs meetings. I've heard it at the DAS meeting. I've heard it in the Laney Faculty Senate meeting. So I think there's, uh, different issues and concerns out there. Uh, particularly, uh, as we go out and, uh, for example, if Laney College starts having, you know, 400, 500 courses, uh, out, uh, in, uh, at Laney College, which classrooms are, uh, have windows, which classrooms don't have windows. Uh, any number of different issues have come up. So I do hope that, uh, uh, the Presidents of the Colleges as well as the Chancellor and the Vice President, Vice Chancellors are caring about those concerns. Uh, the other concern that, uh, came up, uh, was the concern about the HIRD refunds. Uh, we were not aware of, uh, the 15 or 17 million dollars that was held by the district uh, for district services. Uh, that has us concerned because there was no participatory conversations about that. And I don't think that, uh, people would have objected of having some kind of dialogue or just, uh, discussion about them rather than a complete, uh, something like that. I am assuming that the, uh, D G S will be doing different, uh, things to help facilitate this return to campus. And I know that, uh, Finance had mentioned that they were going to try to, uh, address the, uh, the, uh, student debt, uh, that's incurred from the pandemic. But the whole point about it is, if you don't have those dialogues, you don't have that discussion. I really question whether or not we're really involved and engaged in collegial, uh, consultation. So, uh, throwing these things out here because I don't wanna get into a situation where faculty continue to get, uh, further upset or concerned because their concerns and issues are not resolved. And so my hope is that, uh, rather than, uh, to ignore, uh, the Academic Senate, I would hope that the, uh, Board of Trustees as well as the Chancellor and Vice Chancellors really adhere to what the, um, BP and the AP and, uh, Title V suggests in terms of, uh, relied upon. So I again want to encourage the Chancellor to definitely have that Town Hall but to also, uh, come and address those specific concerns that are out there, uh, from the Academic Senate. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Donald. Let's move on to Public Communication. Vice President Gonzalez-U N, do you have a key?
Thank you. Um, I've been informed that there were seven people who asked for public comment. Um, Harry Mapadile was one of those and it might be that, that he already gave that report. Um, and so the others are Jennifer Shinosky, Gerardo Chavez, Jeff Sensory, Adam Austin, M J Johnson, and Shirley Brown Fox. Um, Maisha, if you could move them over?
Yes, I just moved over Gerardo Chavez, Jennifer Shinosky, and Jeff Sensory.
Okay, why don't we start with Jennifer Shinosky? President Shinosky, you've got three minutes.
I, I'm gonna start a little off script because I'm disappointed to see that item 4.1 is still on the agenda. It is a clear violation of the P F T contract to have an A P and B P reviewed by the board before it goes to P F T for consideration and P G C prior to coming to the board. Um, so, uh, please take note of that. I did email both the Chancellor and President Reese, uh, President Reese about, um, that issue before tonight. So I hope that that item will be pulled and that our contract will be honored. Um, okay, so now onto my scripted remarks. So, good evening to all of you. Um, I wanna start by thanking the Board and District for the response that was submitted to the Grand Jury Report. I was relieved and heartened to see that the Board stood up to defend their decisions and their real engagement in district affairs. We need an active board here to act as the checks and balances to the decisions that are being made and to be a voice for the community. Too often, we see administrators who hire their friends. We see money evaporating into thin air without any real shared governance decision-making. And we see bullying of the people that decide to speak up and point out the problems that are really systematic in this district. I'd like to now, uh, pivot to some of the issues that have been circulating for faculty and, um, are or were supposed to be brought up on tonight's agenda. First is campus safety. The second is the return to campus plan, which I understand has now been pulled because you no longer need a resolution for it. Um, these two items go together. We've had more than a year to pull together a campus safety plan that reimagines policing and supports our students. P F T supports that decision, but we can see from the CLERI Act presentation that we still have a long way to go. P F T will be vigilant in overseeing the plans and supporting faculty, especially those who work at night. The return to campus plans remain really problematic for faculty as, uh, Senate President Donald Moore just voiced. P F T has a number of outstanding questions about airflow, student health checks, P P E distribution, among other things. We've reviewed the COVID-19 Prevention Plan published by the District. It's a document that is riddled with typos and errors and we remain confused. We've asked for answers to specific questions and continue to patiently wait for those answers. In the past couple of weeks, we've been informed by at least a dozen times that faculty are being referred to the union, to us, for the policies and procedures that are supposed to be implemented for a safe return. We remind everyone here, including the District Administration, that we are not the employers of faculty and it is not our job to make these policies. But if the District's unable to do so, we certainly can. Just let us know that we have the authority and we will get that done within the week. Uh, it's notable that tonight was supposed to have an agenda item, um, allowing all of you to remain remote. So that remote, that agenda item said that you all had safety.
Sorry, we're over time, just to give you a heads up.
Okay, well, maybe I'll ask my colleague Jeff to cede some of his time to me, please.
Mr. Sensory, are you willing to cede time?
I'll just talk fast. I'll see you in a minute.
Okay.
Thanks, Jeff.
Please continue.
Okay, um, we remind everyone here, we're not employers of faculty. We're not responsible for the policies. Oh, I already said that. Um, the Agenda Item 9.2 had said that the District was Um, the agenda's item nine point two had said that the district was able to screen employees, students, and others that come to district facilities, but that the protocols couldn't be implemented to open public meetings, particularly where then they cannot know the number of people who may attend. So does this mean that the libraries, cafeterias, computer labs, tutoring areas, counseling departments aren't going to be expected to open in the spring? And how is it that Peralta cannot open for public meetings with our democratically elected officials? When you have one entrance to a building, when restaurants, bars, concert venues, everybody else can. You expect us to all come back to work, but you don't feel safe? It's really problematic. Um, I have more to say, but I'll stop. Um, thank you so much and thanks for the time, Jeff.
Thank you very much. Um, let's see. Uh, Gerardo Chavez? Gerardo Chavez in the room now?
There are several folks named, um, has named themselves Gerardo Chavez and I'm trying to move them over and it's not working. I'm wondering if I.
Okay, why don't we jump to Jeff Sensory and we'll come back to Gerardo Chavez. Jeff Sensory.
Hey, here I am. How many minutes I got, real quick?
You've got two minutes.
All right. Hi, Jeff Sensory here. I teach history at Astine Island High School at a campus that was formerly called College of Alameda. I was gonna start by speaking to the district board response to the grand jury report, but I think anyone who knows anything can see that the civil grand jury is just a political tool that people use to embarrass and disempower their enemies, make themselves look righteous through selective testimony. So I'm gonna leave it to the people that are engaged with that kind of stuff. Um, instead, I want to say a couple of things. I want to make sure that we haven't forgotten that um, the continued scrutiny of the ACCJC is about the district administration not doing their job, not the board, not COA, not BCC, not Laney, and not Merit. District administration is like keeping, is keeping the watchful eye of the ACCJC on Peralta. And for good reason too, if you're privy to any of the district committee meetings with the rather sloppy and problematic return to work plan. Faculty who have been here long enough are fearful. Not of the science that says under the right conditions, we may eventually return to the classroom, but they are fearful of the district for whom there remains congruity between what they say is being done and what actually gets done. I mean, most of the COVID scare is over, but when you combine even what little is left of that scare with the reputation of our district leader, leaders, it's easy to understand why many of us might feel it's March twenty twenty all over again. And honestly, I applaud the chancellor for doing everything she can. But faculty who have been here for years and years know who to trust and who not to. And um, it's quite revealing that everybody's still pretty much scared as everything else is still opening. And also, the rumor mill is saying that former Vice Chancellor Siddiq Karo is back at Peralta. That's just the rumor mill, but let me be the first to congratulate him. I think there's no one better qualified to assess the decades-long facilities problems of Peralta than the person who elect and let's face it, maybe a little bit of greed caused most of the problems in the first place. So if I'm right about this, which I hope I'm not, it sounds like the new bosses are the same as the old bosses over there and we have Fight the All-Star Team Assembly. To celebrate his return, I'm gonna be putting a link in the chat to a video that many of us remember from two years ago. I think you'll remember it. Thank you very much. Have a great night and um, I'm glad you guys are doing everything you can to stay safe.
Thank you very much, Jeff Sensory. Uh, let's see. I see Aleni Gastis is in the room here. Why don't we go with you and uh, then I'm gonna look at the rest of the screen. Aleni Gastis, you're up.
Hello, good evening, trustees, administrators, members of the Peralta community. I am here tonight with one of my many hats, the hat of Laney College Faculty Senate President. Um, I wanted to let you know that the Laney College Faculty Senate made a motion today that I come to speak and express our intent to work collegially with the district administration about academic and professional matters that affect the students and the college that we love so much. We are concerned that there is already a plan for seven point one million dollars of HIRF round three institutional funds from Laney at district general services, and we were not consulted in the forming of priorities for that plan, even though our college, not the district, is required to report expenditures to the federal government. This seven point one million is Laney's share of more than seventeen million of HIRF, HIRF round three institutional funds kept by the district without dialogue. I wrote to the Vice Chancellor of DGS on September sixteenth and again on September twenty first, including the chancellor. On September twenty first, the chancellor responded, saying our questions will be answered at the town hall that was announced today that will be held next week. While many of us look forward to attending the town hall, we hope this won't be a box check saying that we were consulted. The senate is a primarily relied upon body and when we ask for a written response to our questions, we expect to receive one with the purest intentions of collegiality and consultation. Our desire is to participate in this discussion and all institutional planning in order to serve our students during this unprecedented time. We do not want to be presented with a plan. We assert our right to be part of the creation of it. We look forward to working with the district administration to resolve this issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Aleni Gastis. Um, I see Clamot Turvalon. Maysha, is there somebody else on the list who you've let in as well?
Um, I think that was, yeah, uh, let me, I'm gonna try to allow them to speak. Maybe they're on the phone. Let me see if the Gerardo Chavez, I can do that with.
Well, shall we, shall we go to Clamot? Uh, in the meanwhile?
I'm sure.
Okay. Clamot, you were up.
Good evening, Peralta Board of Trustees and all those in attendance. I thank you for allowing me to speak and the SSC Region Three Executive Board for working diligently and expeditiously, expeditiously to aid in providing me this opportunity. I additionally thank all the SSC representatives here tonight to show their support. I would have liked to have been able to invite the Peralta SSC delegates. However, I'm sad to say I have none. And what I would like to bring to light tonight is without their participation, they are missing out on not just the opportunity to make change through our resolution writing and support of California Assembly Bill, but also the opportunity of participating in events uh, like the SSC Professional Development Event, October first to third in person, Palm Beach Western, and also live through virtual telecast. They're also missing out on the privilege it is to serve the students of the California Community College System. And it is a privilege to serve. I would like to act that the Peralta Student Trustees assist us in reaching full Peralta participation in the Region Three Delegate Assembly as we write the resolutions that lead to bills that lead to policy and laws. On a journey toward, on a journey towards equity and eventual equality. Thank you again for allowing me to speak tonight.
Thank you very much, Clamot Turvalon. Um, Gerardo Chavez, are you able to speak? I see you're in the room, two of you. By that name. You can unmute and you've got three minutes. Here we go. Hmm, having a little trouble here. May, is there anybody else? Uh, Adam Austin, MJ Johnson, Shirley Brown Fox, who?
No.
Showed up.
No, there's one individual who didn't put their name on the list, um, but they haven't raised their hand. So I think they may be just, um.
All right. So I'm. So Gerardo Chavez, if you can put in the chat what your status is, uh, we might be able to swing back around. If you're unable to comment at this time, trying to give you an opportunity, love to hear what's on your mind. Okay, well, it doesn't appear to be working right now. So President Naplia Bella Reese, I'll hand it back to you and if we hear from Gerardo Chavez, I'll see whether we can come back to this item then.
Okay, we can do that.
Gable is back to you.
Thank you, Vice President Gonzalez, UN. Let's move on to two point twelve chancellor's reports. Chancellor?
Good evening, everyone. Um, I'd like to um, take a moment to um, inform you that Vice President of Instruction Cooney Hay uh, from Berkeley City College will be providing the report. I've got a text message from President Angelica Garcia that she's not feeling well. So we will start out with the presentation from um, VPI Hay, followed by Merritt College and Dr. Johnson, and then Laney College, Dr. Rudy Besikoff, and last and certainly again, not least uh, President Nathaniel Jones over at College of Alameda. And then we'll have a report from uh, the Vice Chancellor of Academic Affairs and Student Success and Dr. Francisco Herrera on some items that I think of importance to the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Good evening, President Lee, Reese, Chancellor Jackson, Board of Trustees and colleagues. On behalf of President Garcia, I'm here to share Berkeley City College's updates tonight. First, I wanted to share how wonderfully we are celebrating the Latinx Heritage Month this month. BCC joins the annual national celebration, recognizing more than sixty-two million Latinx in the United States during the period of September fifteenth through October the fifteenth. BCC elevates our Latinx cultures through a week-long series of events beginning on October the twelfth, with an opening celebration during College Hour with President Garcia and Dan Zantus. On October the thirteenth, during the College Hour as well, we will host our story, our voice panel, and it will highlight Latinx youth and in community activists, including Dora Lopez, as fat Chicana feminist who use social media in magnifying the Latinx experience. On the fourteenth of October, there will be a poetry session during the College Hour and then at five thirty any evening where all BCC students are invited to join us for an evening of the games with Houdaria, Houdaria and music. We would love all of you to join us for all those events and we'll look forward to seeing you there. Second, um, Harry has already shared, but BCC Office of Student Activities and then Campus Life are doing a great job in hosting a club rush on October fifth and sixth. And students will have opportunities to explore and find clubs and join um, and then to be able to join based on their interest and passion. So I'd like to take this opportunity to thank um, the student leaders, students, and then Director Nguyen for this wonderful, exciting event. And I'd like to um, take this time to brag a little bit about BCC. Last Friday, uh, one of our alumni, Ashley Santos, shared her stories and experiences at BCC with Berkeley side. Ashley spoke about the programs, resources, and then support she gained to reach her goal of transferring to UC Berkeley and especially during the pandemic. The article also covered how BCC has gone to meet students with their needs at where they are at and during the pandemic while um, working really hard to balancing and addressing a moment. This article can be accessed by the link that is on your board report from BCC tonight. Um, last but not least, I want to brag a little bit more about BCC and this is many, um, as many of you already know, but Dr. Garcia has been selected to be the Aspen Institute College Experience Excellence Program for twenty twenty-one and twenty-two academic year. She's one of the twenty-five leaders across the nation selected for this prestigious program. The program, which is supported by JP Morgan, supports community college presidents in their early years of their tenure as they aim to achieve higher and then more equitable levels of student success. We are very proud of Dr. Garcia's accomplishment in this regard and we really are excited to witness what she can do moving forward. And this concludes my report. Thank you.
All right, even in obstinacy, I want to congratulate Dr. Garcia as well. That's, it's a really big deal. So, um, good evening, Chancellor, Board President, Trustees and Peralta Community. Um, this is the Merritt Report for this evening. Um, let's start by saying on Friday, September seventeenth, Merritt held its annual Fall Planning Summit. The college came together to engage in dialogue regarding the Educational Master Plan and our accreditation follow-up report. But we also had uh, critical conversations about what it means to put students first, which is our mission at Merritt College and how to move beyond mere platitudes uh, so that we can get to the work of meaningful equity building. Um, we reviewed the district and college safety policies regarding COVID nineteen and discussed some logistics of a return to campus. Those conversations are obviously ongoing. Uh, we encourage everyone to attend the uh, the open house or open forum or um, town hall, whatever you want to call it, on October fourth at ten, uh, from ten to eleven thirty. Uh, we also evaluated our goals of the college acknowledging both the great progress that we've made in some respects and areas where additional attention and resources are needed. Uh, finally, there's an update to the exciting changes that we have going on uh, that continue to take place under our Guide Pathways Initiative, including uh, our areas of interest and pathway maps that are being beta-tested on our website. So please check us out for that. Next, I want to say um, out of eighty-seven community, California community colleges that offer associate's degrees in nursing, there was a, there was a little ranking that took place. And Merritt College was recently ranked the sixth best program in the state and the second best program in the Bay Area. So that's something uh, for which we're very proud. But like I said, we're, we're looking to reclaim our number one spot um, to get back to where we belong. But that's a really big deal. So we appreciated getting that honor. Uh, we're very proud to offer such a distinguished program at a time when there's a critical shortage of healthcare workers in general and nurses in particular. And I think the, the reality is that many of our health, allied health programs have been, have been, have been really hit hard during the shutdown. Uh, and nursing is uh, really borne the brunt of that. Uh, we had situations for our students where hospitals were canceling uh, placements and clinical rotations, which made it really difficult for our students to obtain um, their, their critical, their critical direct patient care hours. So with that, we are excited to announce a very recent partnership with the West Oakland Health Council, which is a community health agency that is dedicated to providing quality healthcare uh, to diverse patient population in Oakland um, and throughout Alameda County. Uh, and that, and West Oakland Health has championed the health of East, uh, East Bay African Americans uh, for over fifty years. And I want to say they remain committed to supporting social racial justice for all communities. That's something that's very central to their mission. As such, we are very honored to partner with an agency whose values are so closely aligned with ours at Merritt. And also, we're excited to get our students to clinical rotations if they need. Finally, last bit of good news. At last week's Board of Governors meeting, Merritt College received the Dr. John W. Rice Award for Diversity and Equity um, from the State Chancellor's office. So very, very happy about that. It was a good, it was been a good couple of weeks for Merritt. Um, and really, I just want to point to our improvement in the successful completion of transfer level English and mathematics among our students of color. That's what constituted the basis for receiving the honor. Um, so certainly, this procedure's recognition attests to the hard work that our students are doing. Okay, we couldn't do it without them, but I also want to give a nod to the faculty members who developed the curriculum and delivered it in such a way that allow our students to succeed and persist in significant numbers. I also want to give a shout out to our support uh, program, Sancofa, FYE, uh, Puente, who've proven to be transformational as well. And finally, I just want to say our institutional commitment to putting students first, which really means the psychological and emotional capital that we invest in them every day. I think that accounts for the, for whatever success we've experienced. We may not always meet the mark, but receiving this award, I think, underscores that as a college and as a district, we get it right more often than not. So with that said, that's the report.
Good evening, Chancellor Jackson, President Naplia Bella Reese, members of the governing board, colleagues in education, valued community members, and most of all our students. Uh, before I start my report this evening, I'd like to extend congratulations to Merritt's College uh, for the, its recognition with the Rice Award. And also, uh, congratulations to Dr. Garcia uh, for her uh, attaining the Aspen Fellowship. Those are both incredible things. Laney College will be welcoming students in the community to our two-day, one-stop uh, events to help boost enrollment uh, for the late starting classes for fall semester. We hope to see you at the flagpole on Tuesday, October twelfth, from ten to three, and Wednesday, October thirteenth, from twelve to six. And I can tell you, a lot will be happening. In addition to providing info on our late starting classes, we will be. In addition to providing info on our late-starting classes, we will be assisting students with enrolling, providing information about financial aid, making counseling available, checking out Chromebooks. There will also be opportunities for students to meet faculty as well as fellow students. And thanks to the participation of our ASLC also, to learn, it'll be an opportunity for students to learn about our clubs as well as our student government. We look forward to seeing everyone and just want to say thank you to all who are putting the event together. I also want to say congratulations to our colleagues in career and technical education, not only at Laney, but also at College of Alameda. Laney College is fortunate to be one of four colleges in the state to receive one-hundred-and-twenty, a one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar grant as part of the California Apprenticeship Initiative High Road Training Partnerships Planning Grant. Try saying that ten times fast. The goal of this grant is to create pre-apprenticeship curriculum for careers in manufacturing, COA, get ready, automotive techno, automotive technology, as well as water and wastewater sectors. We look forward to collaborating with COA as well as our other educational partners in the region. And it is especially exciting to be creating curriculum informed by the fifteen, that's right, fifteen industry partners that you see tonight in your board report. I would like to thank Dr. Mark Martin, Deputy Sector Navigator for Advanced Manufacturing in our region, as well as Dean Alejandra Tomas for her leadership as well. So for the final theme of my report tonight, I, it really is, comes down to two words, Laney writes. And it's, it's something I'm so pleased to share as things that are not only happening with our students, but also our great faculty. First, a shout-out to Professor Alani Gastis and The Citizen, because they're doing a lot of great things. First, Dr. Pamela Rudd, one of, one of the students in the Journalism Program, along with the photography from Gabe Johnson, had their article not only published in The Citizen, but also pub, cross-published in Oakland Side, and there's a link to the article in your report tonight. But also, I'm very happy to share that Laney students Lucra and Piper and Manel Rash were published as part of the Bay News Rising Program, which is a paid internship partnering our students with journalists from the Pacific News Media Guild. And this is something that's truly outstanding for our students. On the faculty front, I would also like to congratulate English Professor Judy Juanita. For this year alone, she has been honored with the Tart Fiction Prize as well as the Forty-Second Annual American Book Award from the Before Columbus Foundation. If you look in your board report tonight at the write-up that really praises Professor Juanita, you will see a multitude of publications in which she has had her work put, put out to our reading community, which is outstanding. You know, graduation may be still seven months away, but I think across our four colleges, accomplishments are always happening. With that, I'll conclude my board report tonight.
Good evening, President Reese, Trustees, Chancellor Jackson, colleagues and guests. I'm gonna take a brief moment and make a bit more of a personal kind of statement. As the newest president in our group, I am so honored to have a wonderful group of colleagues that I share leadership with in the district. And I congratulate my colleagues for the tremendous ways in which they represent their institutions and the ways in which they are succeeding. So hats off to you. Congratulations to each of you for the great work that you're doing and under the leadership of our esteemed Chancellor. As you can see from my background, we are celebrating Latinx or Hispanic Heritage Month. The College of Alameda has organized several opportunities to learn and celebrate the rich culture and accomplishment of our Latinx brothers and sisters. We have programs that are occurring during college hours throughout the week. These programs are sponsored by our Exeso and Puente office, as well as our Office of Student Activities and Student Life. They include state-of-the-higher education for Latinx in California, the Campaign for College Opportunity, as well as Understanding Latinx Diversity and Why It Matters. Additional information on the sessions that are occurring, the dates and time regarding these are available on the College of Alameda website. I'd like to thank the organizers and sponsors of our Latinx Heritage Month celebration. Additionally, as you are undoubtedly aware, the issue of fraudulent student enrollment has been a major problem for the colleges throughout the state. The College of Alameda's Distance Education Team has developed some easy but effective ways to identify fakes through, fake students through the use of early check-in assignment. Early check-in assignments are low-stake assignments or activities that students complete before census to signal their intention to complete the course. They not only help in identifying fake students, but also have the added benefit of humanizing the online instructional environment. I applaud our Distance Education Team for their creativity and diligence. To you, I say thank you for your work. I am pleased to welcome College of Alameda's new men's basketball head coach, Ravi Rambara, to the College of Alameda and the Peralta community. Ravi is a coach with a record of winning at very, very high levels as well as being well-regarded as a, as a person with strong character and integrity. Please join me in welcoming Coach Rambara. Lastly, I'd like to highlight the fact that College of Alameda, along with our other colleges, are working diligently on the return-to-campus plan and finalizing our accreditation, follow-up report and teach-out plan. I'm happy to report that the Academic Senate, the Classified Professional Senate, and our College Council have reviewed and are supporting and endorsing these documents. I thank you for your participation in this very, very meaningful work, and I look forward to our continued collaboration and effective governance. Thank you very much.
Good evening, President Reese, Board of Trustees, Chancellor, colleagues and community. Myself, along with Dr. Herrera, the ABC of Institutional Research, are going to provide a short update on the Data Integrity Project. As you no doubt recall, last spring semester, Cambridge West, under the direction of Dr. Deborah Ludford, completed a data integrity report for Peralta. The purpose of the report was to assist Peralta in creating better processes around data integrity, particularly for MIS reporting, which ultimately will positively impact the student-centered funding formula and Peralta's allocations. And so what we have done since that report is what we wanted to provide to you tonight. We have organized the report into prioritizing different projects. We combed through the report many times and, and put them into a format where we can assign responsibility to make sure that someone is accountable, along with putting timelines and other information that's relevant to the many projects that we're undergoing for this overall project. We also have established a timeline for work that will happen this semester and next semester. And we're establishing a permanent district-wide committee that Dr. Herrera will also talk about. And then we are hoping to work with Deborah Ludford this semester and next semester, and she will be partnering with Dr. Herrera on the trainings around MIS data that will happen for college staff and for managers, and work with us to develop guidelines and implement the maps that she created. So, Dr. Herrera, if you could add as well?
Yes, thank you for that update, Dr. Brown. I just want to add that as part of the Data Integrity Project, we will be expanding our Data Integrity Committee so that we have a membership across the four colleges and the districts, and also allowing membership from different areas and offices, including staff from CalWorks, EOPS, Veteran Special Programs, DSPS, Nextup, Foster Youth, as well as staff as our college researchers, deans of enrollment, instructional deans, district schedulers, and also staff from District Information Technology and District Finance. And I'm looking forward to working with all these colleagues in order to ensure that we have data integrity and data verification for all our mandated and state and federal reporting. And as Dr. Brown mentioned, we've identified several key areas that we will be beginning to address. And I believe we're going to begin working with financial aid, district staff and college staff in order to begin our training sessions in order to ensure that we do have the appropriate data integrity in order to make our evidence-based decisions and ensure that we're reporting the correct information. So, thank you.
And last, we just want to say that we look forward to providing updates along the way, especially for the fiscal, the positive fiscal impact that we're projecting from this report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Brown and Dr. Herrera. That concludes the Chancellor's report. President Napoleia Bella Reese, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Chancellor, and thank you, Presidents, and thank you, Vice Chancellor as well. Let us move to the information item, three-point-one, the Clary Act presentation by Chancellor Smith.
Thank you. Good evening, Board of Trustees, Chancellor and the Peralta community. I'd like to introduce Paul Yanis from KSL, who prepares the annual security report for our Clary Act compliance. Paul, do you want to go ahead and go through your report, please?
Absolutely. Good evening, President Napoleia Bella Reese and members of the Board of Trustees, as well as honored guests and presidents of the college. In, in true family-life fashion, of course, I have the house to myself quietly for an hour. Now my young children are going to walk in, so I apologize if you guys hear anything in the background. So I was responsible for preparing what's called the Clary Act Report or your annual security report. And I want to explain the purpose of the report as well as summarize some information in that. So the purpose of the report, it was actually a law that passed in nineteen ninety that was renamed nineteen ninety-eight called the Gene Clary Act. And Gene Clary was a student who attended Lehigh University. And in nineteen eighty-six, unfortunately, she was murdered at her campus in her dorm. And because of that, information needs to now be provided to parents and students about potential colleges they choose to, to attend regarding public safety and security. And so because of this, there have been thirty-five actual federal laws that have been enacted in Gene Clary's memory. And one of them is the annual security report that's required of all higher education facilities that receive federal funding. So I'm going to just kind of summarize the report briefly. First, I want to thank my staff, PJ Guida from Knowledge Saves Lives was responsible in data collection. We collected reports from seven public agencies as well as two security vendors. And there was a lot of research and time that went into this. I also want to thank Tom Peterson and Aaron Warren from Marina Security for tracking down the numerous calls for service that security handled throughout the school year. The report is one-hundred-and-fifty-seven pages long. I'm not going to go through every single one of those. I am just going to just summarize some of the statistics. If you're interested in just the statistics, what needs to happen in the report is we have to give a three-year comparison for anybody who's, who's wanting to do research on the four colleges within Peralta District themselves. So the annual statistics can be found on page one forty-five, and that cover a three-year comparison. And what we've seen through the comparison, the crimes that have been occurring at Laney and Merit College of Alameda and Berkeley City College are crimes of opportunity. Even though we do not have a law enforcement presence any longer on the campus, but in the past six months, we do not see an increase in violent crimes during that time. So that is, that is good news I want to share with the board. We do look at some things. When I speak of crimes of opportunity, I'm talking about things like small fires, arson, burglary and some theft. Those things are, are still occurring, and you can see the three-year comparison there. At this time, I will answer any questions you have regarding the report or anything else regarding public safety.
Thank you, Paul.
Trustees, do we have any questions for Paul or Vice Chancellor Smith? Really? This is a silent board. Normally, we have questions that are relentless. Okay.
There are two hands up. Sorry.
Okay. Oh, I see. Trustee with throw and then trustee Bonilla.
Just a general question. How do we stand overall within the coverage of the Clary Act? How do we stand with respect to other community college districts in the state of California?
Oh, I get this question quite often. So I work with about two hundred districts up and down the state in almost every county. And I don't like to compare them, and here's the reason why. Geographics play, play a lot with crime statistics. You know, what happens in one part of the state compared to other parts of the state. As far as the size of, of the district itself and where it's geographically located, the fact that there aren't any violent crimes to report, that is above and beyond. That, that is not something we normally see. Now, with, you know, students returning back and things like that, I'm not sure if that's going to change. I hope it doesn't. But comparison-wise, yeah, it's really tough to compare apples to oranges.
Trustee Bonilla.
Yes, thank you for that. And thank you for the, for the report. So you know, when I review, every report has its own nuances and its own kind of distinctions about it. So I really appreciated the ease at which I was able to review this report and, and learn some new things. So, and I think that's worth noting. When I look at just little things like understanding and realizing that BCC actually has Roots Clinic at BCC, so that was just new information for me. I also appreciated the modules that were in the report called Not Anymore Program. And so if you haven't had a chance, everyone who has access to this report to review it, those modules, I think, are really informational. They have lots of information just summarized there, and then you can click to a link to see videos. And I think that's really helpful for lots of different situations. And then thirdly, on the reference page for the Peralta District, which I believe was on page one hundred and thirteen, I did notice that some of the titles and dates of individuals were dated. I'm not sure if that was intentional or just a minor oversight. So if we could just go back and review, because I think even if the report was referencing a different timeframe, it's probably good to have current staff titles and folks on there. So Chancellor, I would defer and send that back to you.
All right. Thank you, trustee. Thank you, trustee.
It was, it was a really good report. It was a really good report, and thank you so much, Mr. Yanis.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. One of the things my agency really likes to do is we don't just want to share crime stats. We want to share all available resources to anyone who's making, you know, an educated decision about where to send their kids or, or take classes themselves. And so we wanted to list as many resources as possible.
That was great. Thank you.
And I just have a quick question since I don't see any more from our trustees. The, the report is very long, right? I guess the question that I have, given your experience with other institutions, educational institutions, the information here is so important for students to have, but it's kind of inaccessible because it's a hundred and, you know, a hundred and some pages. Is there a way or is, is there an easier or more accessible way to kind of put this on the website? put this on the website rather than just the report itself? And I don't know if you could answer that, but if that's something that you could share with the Chancellor and Vice Chancellor Smith, I think that'd be good.
I, I can actually. So one thing that you will find in this report that's pretty unique, and again, I want to credit my staff. If you go to the table of contents, it's a grab-and-go table of contents, which means when you pull the mouse or the cursor up there, it turns into a hand. And whatever you click on will immediately go to that section. So it's basically compatible for online, and we wanted to do that purposely.
Okay.
And trustee Napoleia Bella Reese, we, we are required to post the full report rather than to pull out selective items because that defeats the purpose of why they, they made the mandate. Full disclosure and transparency, but with the addition that Paul said of adding the grab-and-go so you can click to where you want to go immediately, I think that makes it easier for you to hone in on that.
That's, that's so funny, actually. I just clicked on it, and it did bring me to that. And I didn't realize it because it was a hyperlink, so thank you. I just learned something from your comment. All right. I think that that is all from our trustees. Thank you, Mr. Yanis.
Excuse me, trustee. Trustee Withrow has his hand up again.
Okay. Trustee Withrow, you've got the stage.
Or was that from a previous question?
I'm sorry. We, we have, we have a reputation, I'm going to put it that way, rather than documented, but a reputation for being a high-crime-rate area. And is there a way we can take your report and lead people to believe that the participation in our colleges are of less risk than the public in general?
I, I really think that the, the value of the report is just to educate people and let them, you know, kind of make their own decisions based on the information that we have. I, I don't want to kind of lead anybody one way or the other. You know, because you, you may have students coming from out of the area who just are unfamiliar with the Bay Area itself. So again, I, I would just kind of err on the side of giving them the information and rather than try to lead somebody one way or another, or just give them the education that they have to make the right decision.
Okay. I don't see any more hands. I don't see any more questions. I believe we're good. Let's move on to 3.2. Again, thank you, Mr. Yanis for the report.
Thank you.
Vice Chancellor Smith or Keith Kajia?
I'm sorry. I, I didn't realize. Good afternoon again. Good evening to everyone again. I'd like to introduce AECom, Keith Kajia, and also Dave Olson, who is our financial, working with our bonds. And they are going to provide a general update for us. So please go right ahead. Sorry about that. Thank you.
I have the presentation up. Guys, if you wanted me to share my screen, let me know.
Yeah, unless, unless, Maysha, can I share my screen?
Yes, you can.
Am I sharing my screen? I'm probably sharing.
Desktop right.
Background, basically. There you go. Okay. Good evening, President Napoleia Bella Reese, trustees, Dr. Jackson, college presidents, and the Peralta community. My name is Keith Kajia. I'm the One Program Manager overseeing the capital bond program. I'm joined this evening by David Olson from Backs from MacCarley Berry and Company. We're going to kind of provide you a snapshot update of the bond program and how things are going over the past 18 months. This first slide here kind of highlights through the month of August kind of some snapshot statistics. We're proud of the volume of projects that are underway. There are 15 major projects underway. There are 56 infrastructure packages underway as well. The difference between those frankly is the infrastructure projects are addressing some of the core backbone needs of each college campus, while the major projects are typically new buildings and new projects that are moving forward. We've committed $126 million in contracts over the past 18 months. We sold $115 million of bonds that represented the last tranche of Measure A, which was 65 million, and the first tranche of Measure G, which was for 50 million. Of that, we spent 40, 49 million as of the end of August. More importantly, we've secured $77 million of state funding to really leverage the local bond dollars. These photos here represent some of the active projects that are currently under design. This is the theater modernization at Laney College, a state-funded project. This is the Berkeley City College West Project now on Milvia Street, which is now in its schematic design phase. This is Merritt College, the Child Development Center, which is in DSA, Division of the State Architect for Approval, and College of Alameda, which is also in DSA. This is the Auto and Diesel Technologies, that new building. Speaking of leveraging state matching funds, we, here's a breakdown of the $77 million that we've secured through final project proposals that were approved by the State Chancellor's Office. I can see that five of the six projects are currently in DSA, so making good solid progress on those. The Alameda Aviation Complex 2 Phase 2 project is just started design, and we're just getting underway with that project. This is a snapshot of the design-build projects that are underway. You may recall back in July, I presented to you and conducted a workshop to look at design-build as an alternative delivery for a number of our capital projects. Three of those projects in that resolution are currently underway, namely the Laney College Central Plant Cooling Tower upgrade, the Laney College Locker Room Modernization, and the Berkeley City College West Project, the Milvia Street Building that we were referencing. We do have some future procurements. We're finishing some kind of scoping for the College of Alameda New Science and Administration Building and the Berkeley City College Center Street Reconfiguration Project, so modernization for Berkeley that will follow the Berkeley City College West Project. So that's out there as a ways. I had previously presented to the board the idea of moving forward with Merritt College, the Science Allied Health TI build-out. This was a build-out of spaces that were cor and shelled in the original Barbara Lee Building. We've since changed our strategy. I'll be coming forward to the board in a future meeting to look at removing that from the design-build list. We're going to pursue that through traditional delivery as we break up the work into different packages to accelerate the project. But the exciting news, I think, is the idea of moving forward with the Laney College New Stand Building under design-build. So I'll be coming forward to the board in a future meeting to present a resolution and reasoning for the acceleration of that project and also the conversion of that project to design-build status from the previous traditional design-build status. Here's a snapshot of the $115 million that were sold back in May and kind of where we stand as a snapshot of where we're spending the monies, how they were budgeted across the campuses. And here's a cash flow of our projected spending for the next few years. The arrow there designates kind of the current quarter, so we've been running at a clip of we had been spending about 2, 2 million or so a month. We're starting to ramp up now to be more into 3 to 4 million dollar range. We should see an exponential growth of that, as you can see from the chart here, with major constructions slated to begin in early 2022 and starting the planning with Dave Olson and his team for planning a bond sale as well. So with that, let me turn it over to Dave.
Thanks, Keith. Can, can people hear me? Give me a thumbs up, Keith. All right, fantastic. The, as Keith indicated, and a theory on Dave Olson with Backs from Carley Berry, we're the district's financial advisor with regard to the bond program. And bond program management work is ongoing. Central to that work is the tracking of bond expenditures. We want to make sure that we're spending money fast enough to meet federal tax law requirements. We want to make sure that we're issuing new bonds soon enough to have money in the bank to fund the projects that are underway, and we want to manage the bond cash flow in a way that's kind of forward-looking with a strategic vision that creates maximum benefit and reflects best practices. So that's a big piece of it, is this tracking of expenditures. We're also trying to look ahead to the next bond issue and manage our ongoing obligations and communicate a positive message about the bond program a, as we go through it. Next slide. In terms of the expenditures, we've been spending, as Keith indicated, about 2 to 4 million dollars a month, but we're going to be increasing that in the years ahead. This is just a pro forma look at what the expenditures might be over the next three to four years. So when Keith talks about having issued $115 million worth of bonds, spending that to 50 million, you know, if we're spending 10 million a month or 8 million a month or even more than that, we're going to need another bond issue in the, in the near future. Next slide. Given the district's cash flow needs and the current interest rate environment, we're expecting to issue bonds as early as next December is what we say here. A bond issue might be in January or February. There are a lot of pieces that we need to fit together, but because the issuance process takes two or three months, we ought to expect to start seeing documents before the board, you know, in, in, in October, November timeframe. The slide says that we want to issue bonds every one or two years that we want to have enough funds on hand always to fund the next two to three, or when we issue bonds, we want to have, bring the funding up so we're handling the next two to three years' worth of expenditures. We want to have issue sizes that are marketable so that we're not too large searching for investors. We want to, we want to issue more bonds when interest rates are good. We want to manage the tax rate so it's fair to current and future taxpayers, and it's kind of meeting the projections we gave to voters at the time of the election. We want to follow prudent debt management principles, so there's a lot going on. The slide mentions at the end that we may have an opportunity to refund some existing bonds and create taxpayer savings. So the, when resolutions come to the board, they'll probably reflect authorizing the sale of refunding bonds as well. Next slide. This is just an interest rate chart. It shows interest rates over the last three years, specifically the 10-year Treasury rate. You can see that, that rates are low. Next slide. I mentioned that we're working to take care of ongoing obligations, that we're continually updating the, the program as we get new facts over time. There are a couple of good pieces of news that are mentioned in the first bullet here. One is that the tax base continues to, we continue to see strong tax base growth, 5.5% from 1920, we're from 2021 into 2122. We're, have always built the program around a 4% growth assumption, so that's, that's good. The, the bond tax rate that's going to be paid by your taxpayers in the upcoming year is $40.70 per 100,000 of assessed value. That's in line with the projections that we gave at the time of the last election. Is also in line with what recent history has been for the district. I should mention that it's a little bit over what the median is for community college districts in the Bay Area, and that's something that we're, we're working on as we evaluate all the, all the pushes and pulls of the program. I say here, we continue to address rating agency concerns. The, they're mostly concerned about accreditation issues, operational issues that they read in the paper. So every time that there's a negative story in the newspaper, it's a, it creates another challenge. I'm looking forward to the, the time when we get some of those things beyond that. One of the things that we have been able to do is in terms of district finances, we're really on the right track there. So what we're looking at, when we meet with, we're answering some questions from Moody's right now, and they're almost all on district management, accreditation, operational issues, things like that. We've got the financial issues pretty much where we want them to be. We're also working on the ongoing compliance issues. Next slide. I always welcome the opportunity to emphasize this is a long-term effort and that we want to operate in a way that builds support for the program over time. This is not the last bond measure that the district will need. We want to run this program, you know, acknowledging that. We want to establish best practices. We want to celebrate our successes. We want to be conscious of the taxpayer impact and to leave capacity for future issuances. We're going to be spending money that, I don't know if it'll be Keith and I, but, but somebody will be making these presentations over the next 15, 20 years and, and beyond. So we want to, we want to do it, do a good job, right, Keith? That's it?
Let me go through each college, give you a snapshot of progress that we're making. This is an image of the new Center for Liberal Arts. You're all very familiar with this new building now. Hopefully, Dr. Jones is very much enjoying this building on this campus. What I've done here is I've done that same kind of status bar chart that takes a project from planning through construction to indicate kind of status of last time I reported to the board, which was back in March, April, and kind of progress that's been made. So notably, the AutoTech Auto and Diesel Technologies Building and Aviation Phase 1 projects are now in DSA, moving forward through design review. And the Aviation Complex Phase 2 project is now going through a programming phase. This is a conceptual image of the Berkeley City College West Project, which is the large design build underway. And for that project, we've completed the programming phase, which was a collaboration phase with Dr. Garcia and her executive team. We're now in the schematic design phase, going through building user group meetings with the faculty and staff there to really start to define and evolve the design of the project. So the project's moving right on schedule. We're right on track with that design-build project moving forward. This is interior rendering of the new Learning and Resource Center at Laney College, which is currently in its very final phases of DSA approval. And for the other projects at Laney, you can see that the progress made on the Laney Locker Room Modernization Project, which is a design-build project, really finishing its construction documents, actually, it's now moving into DSA. The Central Plant Cooling Tower is also moving forward through DSA. It's actually in the back check process now. Learning Resource Center is also in back check, and the Theater Modernization is in DSA. So all projects moving forward, this is again why we're looking at our spending really start to jump up next year as we start to bid some of these projects either at the very tail end of this calendar year or certainly early next calendar year in 2022. We'll be bidding projects, and there'll be quite a bit of construction going on throughout the district. And this is an interior view of the Child Development Center at Merritt College. That project's also coming through its final DSA review cycle. Also, the Horticulture Complex is also a state-funded project. It's currently in DSA. And the Science Allied Health TI build-out, that project that I'm converting from design-build to design-bid-build-delivery, we're now going through an architect procurement to select an architect for the two components of that project, being, one being the Barbara Lee space, and then the other being the space that's serving the college campus. Many things continue to evolve with the program. Certainly, the Facilities Master, Technology Master Plan is a large driver. We are looking at different things that kind of drive that plan. Space utilization analysis was completed. We're continually looking at district priorities, basically aligning to ultimately what the educational master plans for the district evolved to, working with Dr. Jackson, of course, the, the president, and the vision for what's the future of education so we can align our facilities with the future delivery plans for the, for education. Next step is being taken actually today with the board approval of the five-year capital outlay. It should be on the agenda tonight for you to look at the IPPs and FPPs that will be submitting to the State Chancellor's Office that start to really align with that vision and kind of align with the bond spending plan that I had presented back in last July to the board. But we all know this is construction. There are definitely program challenges that we're undertaking every day, and I'm going to highlight. For here, I have mentioned some of these before to the board. I wanted to go into a little bit more depth about some of the challenges that we're having and certainly what the impacts are with the program management team, with BGS and the construction management. certainly what the impacts are, what the program management team, with BGS and the construction management firms are doing to mitigate some of these challenges. The first one is a state-funded impact. All of our projects that are state-funded, they go through what's called a milestone approval cycle, DF fourteen D process, if you will. And our original schedules were kind of based on history of pre-COVID, where it was taking a couple of weeks to go through some of these cycles. We're now seeing those cycles be more like a couple of months. So that's happening at different milestones as a project moves through design. Again, these are impacting the state-funded projects, but we're seeing an impact potentially as much as four and a half months of schedule delays as we wait for the states as we achieve these milestones to actually approve the projects. It goes through the State Chancellor's Office and ultimately the Department of Finance for us to continue to move on to the next stage. One of the mitigation measures that we're working on with almost strategies, our state funding consultant, is to look at the early intake of of some of our documents to the State Chancellor's Office so that we can start to run some things in parallel, so we can start to shave off perhaps a couple of weeks off of that impact to facilitate kind of approval and submit it to the Department of Finance. But the bottom line, it is impacting our milestone schedules, our ability to kind of align with the schedules that were presented in the previous bond pending spending plan. So we're seeing in some cases directly related to this, an impact of four and a half months to some of our state-funded projects as far as an extension of when we can actually start construction and get in the ground for some of those projects as it impacts our ability to move through design milestones as well as bidding the construction of the project. A second item is one that I mentioned to the board before, the adequacy of the infrastructure budgets that were in the bond spending plan. Certainly, the facilities master plan indicated a large volume of work required to address infrastructure needs at each college. They're tending to be more extensive than we had originally budgeted in the bond spending plan. And at this point, we've worked closely with each college, with BGS, with the, the DGS engineers to identify where those needs are. We've identified a potential impact of six point five million dollars of additional infrastructure funding that's needed for some of these projects. That's the ones that we've currently identified. The mitigation is basically looking at a realignment of the bonds spending plan projects. Just as a point of kind of reference, if you look at the facilities master plan that was approved back in twenty eighteen, developed in twenty seventeen, it had identified ten packages of infrastructure repairs. Today, we, we have the fifty-six that I kind of mentioned that we're actually actively working on. So it's an exponential increase in the number of packages that we've identified that just need attention to maintain kind of operations at the different campuses. Another mitigation is to leverage state and federal stimulus funding where we can. So where the state might provide some additional funding related to scheduled maintenance or that sort of thing. Certainly, any federal grants or anything that we could tap on to, we would be looking at that. And then looking at alternative delivery options, potentially the use of an energy service agreement, an ESCO agreement, things of that nature. So we're looking at a number of options. These are things that we'll start to write white papers on so we can put some policy kind of things in front of the chancellor, the presidents, the proper committee, and ultimately the board so that you can make a decision on how you might want to move forward with any of these potential mitigation measures to kind of offset this infrastructure, like a shortfall. The third item is frankly, the cost of construction. There's a pretty significant spike due to COVID. A few months ago, we're looking at a sixteen percent spike in construction costs. You can see here, this is a chart that kind of represents the rolling kind of average twelve-month escalation factor. And the bond spending plan included a five percent, which is indicated by that red line target of what we were budgeting in the bond spending plan for what we thought escalation would be. And you can see there's a number of periods where the, the number is going up higher. All right. Now, cumulatively, I think for the past eighteen months, we're at about the ten percent jump. It had been sixteen percent a little bit earlier. You can see here that it's going up and down constantly. It's just something noted that we, we need to track. We certainly timed the bidding market when we get out. We can try to push our projects as fast as possible through design, so we can try to beat escalation to the extent possible. But at this point, we're projecting up to a twenty point five million dollar construction cost increase in the projects that were currently identified in the bond spending plan. A number of mitigation measures that we're looking at to try to mitigate that. One of the things that the bond spending plan did do is it allocated one hundred and fifty-eight million dollars to different contingencies both throughout the projects and program-wide. So certainly, part of that was to offset things like this, right? Things that we could not fully anticipate. So that's certainly an option. Another one is frankly, looking at the alignment of scope to the projects and certainly designing to budget of what we think the new budgets would be based on kind of this escalation spike and really kind of controlling the scope that we're developing for some of the college campuses and their projects. And then looking at bid phasing and timing to the extent possible. Is it possible to phase projects so we can do some components earlier in the cycle? This is something, for example, we're looking at, at the Berkeley City College West Design Build Project to potentially break up some of the projects so we can do an earlier bid package to kind of beat escalation, if you want, and start to lock in pricing a little bit earlier. The things that we're continually working on, this is just the current trend number. It's something that moving forward, I'll be providing some transparency about what this number looks like as we continue to move forward in my future presentations to the board. And last item here, item four is process, internal process improvements. We've, we've had the past eighteen months to look at kind of our turnaround times for processing contracts, payments. This includes everything from the procurement process when a need is identified, going through purchasing, going through an RPR or a request for bids, a bid cycle, ultimately getting on the board agenda and having the board approve contracts. Also, of course, how quickly are we paying contractors and consultants that are working for the district? We're compiling this data now so that we can prepare a report back to IVC Smith and the chancellor and certainly the board of trustees. So there's transparency about our processes that how we've been doing as a collective team, both with the district and the overall consultant team that's delivering the bond projects. Suffice it to say, I think there's room for improvement here. So we'll be looking at some process mapping, some further process mapping to redefine some of those procedures that are internal. The number of checks and things that are going through the different individuals throughout the district, certainly on the management side through the consultant management teams to see where there are opportunities to kind of improve our performance in this area. This certainly has an impact to obviously schedule as, as projects could maybe get stalled because a contract isn't getting expedited and pushed forward and and then notice to proceed to a contractor or consultant. And certainly in the form of a cost increase, right? If, if consultants or contractors feel that the district's not going to be paying them timely, there could be cost increases as they start to drive their costs up, thinking that they have to float some money to cover some of their costs. It also impacts our small local business outreach efforts, right? To make sure that we're responsible to driving our small local businesses and making sure that we're paying them timely. So it's certainly something that we're keenly looking at right now and happy to be presenting this in the future board presentation so that we have some transparency about how we've been performing, but also some of the mitigation measures on how we can continue to improve in this area. And finally, looking at our business community outreach activities, this is kind of a listing of some of those types of activities. We're continuing to do matchmaking sessions. These are kind of revolved around the large design build for the Berkeley City College West project, where we're matchmaking small local businesses with our, our, our design build team for Berkeley. Also reaching out to the community so that the community in general, not just the AEC, the architect, engineering, construction community, but all of the community around Peralta knows what's going on. So reaching out to different groups within the communities. You can see we reached out to Oakland, Moncler Piedmont, IVC Smith, I made a presentation to them. Also, the Berkeley Business Forum and Chamber of Commerce in Alameda Parks and Recreation. We'll continue to do that as we move forward. We also have a number of social media platforms that are active and running. I'll make sure that I get that information out. If you haven't seen it, but we encourage everyone to continue to look at the Bill Peralta website for continual updates on the bond program and some of the business opportunities that are out there for local businesses. With that, that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy with Dave to respond to any questions. I'll stop sharing.
Christine, do we have any questions in the queue? I see a few. I just saw a hand. Trustee Withrow, trustee Jenkins, student trustee Cooper.
Good report, excellent report. Good coverage, good depth. I may have missed it, but what is the size of the bonds that we're authorized to issue that we've yet to sell?
We have seven hundred and fifty million from Measure G that's still remaining to sell.
Are we concerned with that? About the projected increase in inflation and substantial increase in the interest rates that we're going to be exposed to?
I'll let Dave, if he could respond to that.
Okay, I'd say, I'd say two things. And the thing that's most directly related to the bond side of things is we, we built our program around interest rates of five percent on, on the bond issues. I think the first one we got done at a little above two percent. This next one we ought to get done at about the same levels. So we've got, we're going to have two behind us at, at attractive interest rates. So we ought to be able to make the, the program work if it's implemented over the same time period within the tax rate constraints that we built for ourselves in terms of, are we going to get the projects done? Keith, Keith is probably better at addressing this than, than I am, but and addressed it a little bit during the, the presentation. But I think we ought to be open to all sorts of possibilities, whether we value engineer the cost of the projects down, whether we whether we move projects from, from this bond down to a subsequent bond. If we're going to be spending money significant amounts over the next twenty years, we shouldn't be as concerned about delays as, as you might be if this was our, if this was our one crack at it. Keith?
Yeah, we're, we're continuing the trustee with road to drive the construction projects forward. Right? We were always trying to beat escalation even when, before we knew this COVID spike was going to hit us. Right? So we are constantly pushing the projects. That's why there's fifteen major capital projects underway right now. And these fifty-six infrastructure packages moving forward. The sooner we can get out there, the better, frankly. There's, there's nothing outside of time that's going to impact the, the projects. If we continue to delay decisions on anything, it'll push the projects out further, just going to cost more, right?
Exactly.
We've, we've calculated that escalation clip based on my slide there, that twenty point five million. We'll continue to track that. But again, I have to emphasize, we've, we've also planned for these types of things to happen. Right? There's a hundred and fifty-eight million dollars of the roughly billion-dollar capital program that specifically set aside for contingencies for this very thing. Right? So part of it is a strategy to see how much of that contingency we want to use for those types of things. Each major capital project has about twenty percent contingency in its budget in the bond spending plan. Five percent was for design contingency, a five percent owner contingency, and ten percent was for potential change orders. So there's an allowance in each construction budget and then program-wide, there's a forty million dollar allowance program-wide that's just set aside district-wide for any other kind of emergency that we have related to the bond program. Right? So that's, that's the thoughtfulness that we put into preparing the bond spending plan.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Jenkins?
I want to second what trustee Withrow said. That was a really, really thorough and depth presentation. I have two questions. One, Keith, do you have a rendering of what the Horticulture Center at Merritt is going to look like? And second, I might have missed it, but what's her current bond rating?
I'll let Dave respond to the bond rating. Dave?
Okay, sure. I'll, I'll answer. I thought you were going to get the first one first. As I looked up the bond rating and I'll send a top to a theory, but currently the, the bond rating from from Moody's Investor Service, which is the one we're working with most closely now, is double A three with a negative outlook. So the bonds are, the current review is, is looking at the, the possibility of downgraded to A one, but we're at double A three currently with, with, with Moody's. And I'd have to check the, the S and P rating. I believe the S and P rating is double A minus, but I can confirm that through a theory in the chancellor.
And what does that mean for our interest rates?
The interest rates, California general obligation bonds are generally sell well, well in the market. The difference between a, a one rating and a double A three rating, which is the bottom of the double A category versus the top of the A category, is probably somewhere between five and ten basis points. So instead of borrowing at two point five percent, if we were lower rated, we might be borrowing at two point five, five or two point six percent. So it's, it's a significant amount over, over time, but market movements are going to be even more significant.
Okay.
And then you had the, the other question was about the, the rendering, trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
This is a great opportunity for me to show my bond website here. If I can get my screens coordinated. Am I, am I showing the bond website right now?
No.
What, what do you see?
Construction cost escalation, the PowerPoint. I think you had it a second ago.
Yeah, sometimes you'll have to stop sharing, Keith, and then reshare your second item. We found that to be the case sometimes.
I've lost my, well, I, let's see, I was trying to try to show off my bond website. If this thing will cooperate with me.
We had it for a split second.
It's apologies.
No worries. As you're doing that, should we go there?
Am I showing my desktop or my?
Your website and now your desktop.
Oh, God.
But you had it.
Okay.
Here it is.
I'm sorry about that, but so if we're going to Merritt College here. And here's the Horticulture Building Replacement Project. If you click this link here, you can see the conceptual aerial, and here's renderings from Nolan Tam of Horticulture Project. So is there trustees for you to go and check out the updates of the latest imagery on any of the projects?
Looks great and that's a layer.
Yep, I know Dr. Johnson is excited about getting that facility up there.
Looking good, Keith, looking good. Okay, can you stop sharing again?
Okay, thank you for that. Let's go to student trustee Cooper.
Thank you so much for your presentation. First, let me start by just apologizing to everyone. I'm a little foggy after my COVID shot yesterday. It's, it's hit me that I, that I'm very grateful to have gotten from Laney College. I, I wanted to ask two questions. First of all, what sort of student involvement or feedback has been incorporated in or sourced in putting together these plans and projects, especially in terms of things like what sort of features these facilities will have?
Right. I know we, we've made it a point to try to engage the student community as much as possible. It's been very challenging, right, during COVID as the user groups are happening and that kind of engagement is going on. So it's, it's close meetings with the executive leadership of the college with faculty, then finding the right opportunities through the facilities committees to, to kind of align where those opportunities are to provide input related to the projects. From, from my point of view, as a program manager, I make it a point to make sure I'm engaging each district's, each college's facilities committee. So there's always an opening opportunity for when input can be provided, when those opportunities would be as far as, you know, establishing the right forums to engage the student community in that kind of input.
Okay, to clarify that, that feedback. So, so there were forums put together to receive information from students on these projects? Or perhaps you reached out to groups like the ASGs?
I think there, there's been some, some engagement with the students, certainly not as much as certainly in the I think there's been some engagement with the students, certainly not as much as certainly in the COVID environment, right? That we would have liked to have done. So certainly looking for whatever opportunities to continue to engage students in kind of the design and evolution of getting that kind of feedback in the projects. Much of the feedback that I've received has been through the facilities committees at each college where there's students representatives there that are engaging and invited to participate and provide that kind of opinions related to what's going on when we provide similar updates on the projects and the progression of the designs for each project.
Okay, thank you. For further feedback, you might get really far with, you know, sending a survey or even popping on the agenda of your, of our student governments. We've got a lot of activity brewing from them, and I bet they'd be ambitious about supporting that. My next set of questions is whether there are-
Trustee Cooper, I was just going to add one more thing to what Keith said. The Facility Master Plan, which is what they are going off of, that integrated and brought forth the feedback. So it's that Facility's Master Plan definitely had student input in there when it was first created, and we were not virtual at the time. Okay.
Fantastic. Thank you for that clarification. And then I was just wondering if there has been in this project planning any equity-minded planning and develops such as going, you know, developing with a mind for unexpected accessibility needs, you know, beyond basic ADA compliance? Or, you know, planning gender-neutral bathroom access and things like that, you know, that's an issue that's that's been an issue at Merritt College, for example, for a while, is who all has to go far, how far to get to one of those? So is there any things like that that you might be able to example beyond the basics? I mean, obviously, we have to be ADA compliant, so I'm wondering what beyond what we have to do might have been incorporated into the planning?
Yeah, we've certainly looked at standards across the board, gender-neutral restrooms, for example, and that component of incorporating that into our standard, right, moving forward. We're also addressing kind of even the baseline ADA issues at different colleges, right? We have two projects ongoing right now at the moment for Merritt College and College of Alameda to address basic ADA issues as well. So trying to make sure that we get that baseline removal barriers done for that baseline, and then looking at some of those other opportunities to kind of expand that as well.
You know, I would like to-
Respond to that?
Yeah, I'd also like to add to Keith's response in terms of student participation. When we ask the college presidents in the beginning of all our projects, we also ask for student participation.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's go to trustee Bonilla and then David Olson.
Okay, great, thank you so much, and thank you, Keith, and thank you, David, for this presentation. It's always good and interesting and actually very exciting to get these updates about the bond program. And Keith, you can't tell everyone enough, you got to push that Bill Peralta website, right? Because folks can go there. I go there all the time. It's a great website. And so it's ours. It's Bill Peralta, so definitely go check out the projects and progress. So I want to thank you, Keith, also for bringing up some of the challenges because there's something that we obviously, as a board, need to keep an eye on, definitely at the policy level, to ensure that we're doing our part to make sure that all of the, that this program, this bond program is moving forward effectively. But I think I have, my questions are really more, and statements to the chancellor. As we heard this, this high overview presentation of the bond program, it made me think about the bond committee. It made me think about questions that trustee Withrow and trustees Jenkins raised around kind of budget and finance and bond ratings. And it's probably a really good time for us to start thinking about when we are to receive a budget and finance kind of spend down or spending overview. The other piece related to that, and I think that's an important piece around budget and finance, where are we with budget and finance on, within our bond program? The other piece, and Keith made reference to this in the outreach that you all are doing. So as someone who works at another public agency right down the road, I often hear about the public engagement that you all are doing for small business utilization, which is amazing, right? So I hear about it from contract compliance over at the port. But I'm also interested and wondering, you know, what, so what does our business utilization look like? How are we doing? Because you all are doing a great amount of outreach. So it would be good to see kind of the fruits of our efforts, right? And kind of highlight and uplift that a bit. So thank you again for this presentation. And Chancellor, a lot of that was for us internal.
Thank you, trustee.
Thank you, trustee, just to let you know. And I, I think that Keith and IBC Smith can verify. I just asked those same questions. We have a meeting that is scheduled, I believe, next week to look at the spend down and to go over that. And we're also looking at some recommendations going forward with our small local business and policies that we might adopt. We have some procedures, but we don't have any policies. So as these large projects come up, we want to make sure that we're including everyone in our area, our community as a whole.
Thank you. Thank you, Chancellor.
David Olson?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to say for trustee Jenkins and for everybody that I just confirmed that the the ratings are at the bottom end of the double A category with all three rating agencies, Moody's, Standard and Poor's and Fitch, double A three, double A minus, and double A minus. And that the outlook of all three agencies is negative because the kind of issues that they're monitoring sustain or consistency of management, the accreditation issues, all are have potential negative news in the future when we get those things behind us. We're looking not only to get a stable outlook on the rating, but kind of restore the ratings to the middle of the double A category, which is where, based on the fundamentals, we ought to be.
Thank you for that. And then I have a question. Oh, go ahead, Gonzalez, Vice President Gonzalez.
Thank you. Just a brief comment. When we began this bond program, even before we went out for bond, we were really behind the curve. And what I'm seeing tonight is that that the district staff has just done a tremendous amount of work. And that's very reassuring. So, you know, I think a lot of times we don't recognize the really challenging circumstances that people work in in this district. And when things don't come out right, you know, a lot of people get upset. I think, though, that increasingly what we're seeing in terms of administrative performance and staff performance is really good. And I, as one board member, feel a lot more assured than I felt when we were going out for the bond when I was pretty skeptical. So, thank you. And I think, you know, particularly for the DGS staff and the DGS leadership, you know, stepping into a role that was kind of thrust on you. Kudos. Nice work. Thank you.
Thank you. And then I may have the last question here. Thank you for that, Keith and David, for that presentation. Very comprehensive. And I'm glad that you're giving these presentations every several months so we can compare them with the other ones prior to. As you always do, which I love, is you have your challenges. And for me, my attention was piqued when you got to the infrastructure budget adequacy. And I'm not exactly sure what that means, but this is my major question. So if you could expand on that a little bit. But my major question is that if there is an increased cost because of the infrastructure budget adequacy, but there's also an increased cost because of materials and the time of COVID and things that are happening. And then there's also an increased cost because of delays. And I know that we have, you have put a buffer, but in your, in your mind's eye, how are we doing in terms of being able to complete our construction, given all of these increased costs and delays? And will our buffer be enough? And I know that this is, you know, I'm not having you read the tea leaves here, but I think you have a sense, given your expertise of the direction we're going. And so I'm a little concerned about your challenge two, your challenge three, and your challenge four.
Sure. And so one of the things that the bond spending plan did is it has kind of a, if you were to really deep dive the cash flow, there's a double camel's hump back in it, basically, right, as far as our spend. There was this initial wave of projects which included the, certainly the six state-funded projects. Anywhere where we were able to leverage our local bond dollars by securing other funding, such as the state match. And then there are kind of priority projects that we thought were important. They were elevated through the user group meetings, through the Facility's technical master plan that were high priorities for the colleges. And so that kind of represented this first wave of projects, much of which is all kind of underway right now. Then there was kind of the next wave of projects, and some of those, you'll probably also see those in the IPPs that will be and the FPPs that'll be presented today as well. That's kind of the second round that's coming in the future potentially, right? So I'm pretty confident because of that mitigation measure that, you know, the projects that we had identified that are in the first wave, we're certainly going to be able to complete all those projects within the bond funds. It's the second wave that's a bit of concern. And we have had, started to have some discussions with some of the colleges about relooking at some of those projects. And certainly, any upcoming update to the master plan or the educational plan, master plans, will drive what those projects start to look like as well, right? So I think the short answer is the priority projects that are moving forward right now, completely comfortable that we can complete all those projects, right? So the ones that I was talking about today, the fifty-six packages of infrastructure, the fifteen major capital projects that have started to move underway, right? My number one job, as far as I'm concerned, is to make sure that we don't start to move forward with the project that the district can't pay for and finish and complete, right? That's, if you look at my entire scope work, that's probably the number one mantra from a management perspective that I'm charged with doing. And so that's why it was a purposeful inclusion in the bond spending plan to have that kind of stagger to the next round of projects. We'll have to see, right? We wanted to make sure that we were getting cost certainty on the active projects. Certainly, much of our work moving towards progressive design build was so that we would have a cost certainty sooner rather than later as we progress these projects through design into construction. I think we're starting to see that this market is a bit challenging related to getting that earlier cost certainty because contractors themselves are also nervous, design builders themselves are also nervous that they want to, they don't want to commit to a number, and then pricing goes through the roof, right? So we're looking at having to potentially look at some of our terms of our contracts as well as when we're sitting our, what we call a guaranteed maximum prices in our design build contracts, right? But, you know, we have to kind of wait and see. At this point, we have everything kind of still on track moving forward. But there's a realignment that's happening because of the IPPs and FPPs that are being considered by the board tonight. Some of that is a resubmital of FPPs that were submitted before, some are IPPs that were submitted. So it's kind of ratcheting funding into the future as well as we start to shift to twenty-three, twenty-four, right, some of these projects. So I guess that's a long way of saying the first round of projects, I'm completely comfortable. But the second round is still very much in a planning phase, right, the president, Natalia Bellary. So we're still kind of evaluating that. But it'll be my job to make sure that you're informed as far as when those decisions are being made. And more importantly, as we work with Dr. Jackson, the presidents, and the broader community, how we prioritize what those future projects would be.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I have three other speakers. And just so we're clear, the first wave is fifteen major projects, and then the fifty-six infrastructure packages, right? And then the second wave will be, again, as you decide to align or have conversations with the chancellor and the presidents about. Okay. IBC Smith, and then David Olson, and then I thought I saw Brian Slaughter, but I don't see him anymore.
Great, thank you, trustee Reese. I also wanted to add to what Keith was saying in terms of our realignment and also looking at, you know, unforeseen things that have come up. So when we realign, we also discuss the additional infrastructure projects that we have coming up and we have to address. So we take those back to the colleges, and we talk about that with the colleges and let them know what's going on and what we have to address. So I just want to also add, there's always an unexpected, unforeseen infrastructure or things that we have to address. We need new boilers here, or we're going to do something, you know, with lighting that is needed. So the campuses are always kept in the loop.
Thank you for that, IBC Smith. David Olson?
Okay, and both Keith and a theory have said the same thing in different ways. But I just wanted to emphasize, if we think of Prop G as a bunch of projects that we thought about in two thousand and eighteen that we're going to implement over ten years, we're setting ourselves up for failure. That things change over time, costs changes, as Keith talked about, priorities change. It's a program that's always evolving. What we can commit to is investing in the facilities on an ongoing and consistent basis and communicating the evolution of the program as it goes by.
Thank you all. Okay, I think that we are good. I do not see any more questions. Once again, thank you for the presentation. Now let's go to the consent calendar. If I can have a motion for the consent. Thank you, trustee Withrow, second?
Second.
Thank you, trustee Bonilla, discussion. Okay, roll call.
And trustee Hogan? Student trustee Cooper?
Just one moment, please. Yay?
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
I'm staying.
Trustee Delvin Polk? Trustee Delvin Polk, are you there? I don't hear her. I'll come back. Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you won?
He's left for the evening.
Okay. Trustee Napoleon Bellaries?
Yes.
Trustee Delvin Polk, are you there? There she is.
Yes, sorry, I was having issues with my audio. Yes.
And student trustee Hogan?
I think she may have also left.
She had to leave.
Okay, I will put her aside. Thank you.
Point of inquiry, I might be confused. So consent calendar is item four point one?
It's all of consent. So it is everything that's in the consent calendar, all the items in the consent calendar.
Was there a motion to consolidate those?
No, they're not consolidated. Consent calendars are all part of a block. There, that's the consent calendar. So all that's in section four, section five, if it's under consent calendar, it's all part of a block.
Okay, my apologies. Actually, that still checks out for me. Sorry for the interruption.
No, no worries. Thank you.
Presidente Bellaries, could I have a point of privilege?
Absolutely.
I'd like to address, even though it was voted on by the board, I want to address an item, item four point one, which has to do with Board Policy twenty-four-ten. There was some information that was presented earlier, and I just want to provide some clarity to the board. First, Board Policy twenty-four-ten is not being changed. It is the same policy that is posted on the webpage currently. The only thing that you voted on was that we will review that, and it will be so noted that it was reviewed by the board. In terms of the AP Administrative Procedure twenty-four-ten, let me begin by saying that this was a directive from ACCJC. This was in response to recommendation number eight. There were, as you know, twelve recommendations that came. We are responding to ten of those. And it starts out by saying, in order to meet the And it starts out by saying, in order to meet the standard, that is not something that is negotiable. That is not something that we kick the ball back and forth over. It says, in order to meet the standard, the team recommends that the board establish a formal process for regularly assessing its policies for effectiveness in fulfilling the district's mission and revise them as necessary. That is under standard 4C dot seven. So the administrative procedure that you are reviewing today, you are not voting on it because the policy, the current policy says that the chancellor is the approval authority and that the chancellor then makes the board aware of the policies, the administrative policies. It does not re- require board approval. So I wanted to make that clear because we have some new board members. We also have our student trustees that are here. And it was indicated that we were in violation of a document that was a, a letter that was signed by the PFT back in 2013. And the last time I checked, um, ACC, when they give you a directive to meet the standard, that's what you're supposed to do. And as you know, we had a very rigorous calendar to address all of the 10 standards in less than 90 days. So I just want to put it in perspective and that was done during the summer when there was no faculty available and there was no meetings that were being held. So just for clarity purposes and for it to be on the record, thank you.
Thank you for that.
Point of inquiry on that feedback there. Um, this item that, uh, is not subject to vote by the board, I, I'm curious if that, uh, still falls within the scope of student nine plus one rights? And if so, if any student feedback or involvement has been, uh, sourced for developing this?
As I indicated, we did this during the summer. Um, there were no meetings being held by students during that time and we had to respond by October the first. Um, so the board, um, set up a, a, a board policy administrative procedure task force um, that was identified at the board in an open session that we were doing that and that task force consisted of a faculty member, uh, Dr. Joseph Balinski. It consisted of a board of trustee member, um, trustee Duffing Polk. Um, it had the board, uh, secretary or the board clerk that was a member of that and also the chief of staff. And I was present as ex officio and so was Janet Fokes, um, who is assisting us and completing our report to ACCJC. There was no student that was there. Um, but this has to do with board policies. Um, and so we brought it forward at the last meeting and this is the second reading that you will get a, um, a chance to respond to. And we also did a, um, open fireside chat and presented all of that information at that time. And there were students in the audience at that time.
Thank you, Chancellor.
I'm not familiar with, uh, the, the, the fireside chat feature. I'm, um, I, I'm, uh, but I'm still, uh, lost in my first question as far as whether or not this is an item that falls within the scope of student nine plus one rights. Um, and, and additionally, um, whether students were meeting or not, I'm wondering if, uh, there was any active effort to reach out to students and invite them to participate in this. Um, the, I, I know the ASMC's board, for example, uh, would have been responsive to such emails. So I mean, we, we still exist outside of meetings.
I think that that was done by the presidents at the campuses is that's where students reside and go to campus community events as well as have their meetings. Um, and I know that there, in this, the, uh, the presidents can speak to this. Um, since in, I know Berkeley City College, um, the student senate signed off on the ACCJC report and this is part of that report.
Thank you, Chancellor. Okay, let's move on to action item 9.1. And just a reminder for all of our trustees, we need to either raise our hand or wait to be acknowledged before we speak. 9.1, action item. Okay, second. Uh, I believe that we're getting a presentation on this first.
I'm sorry, um, through the chair.
Yes, yes.
Trustee, I, I thought I seen, um, Trustee Jenkins' hand up unless that was a mistake. I, I was just looking.
For...
On the previous item that we were just...
Mm-hmm, okay. Go ahead, Trustee Jenkins.
It's okay, I've moved forward.
I'm sorry, can't hear you.
Oh, I think he froze.
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can, yes.
It, it's okay, we've moved forward. Um, I was just gonna ask about like potential um, issues with our faculty union. Based on that, are we going to be facing grievances based off of our perception of um, the CBA and their perception of the CBA?
Chancellor, are you, or Natasha?
Yes. That may require a legal analysis, so my recommendation would be that we, we can provide that.
Great, thank you. Okay. Now we went to, uh, Trustee Withrow, motion for 9.1. Do we have a second? Although I do believe we have a presentation. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Trustee Bonia. Um, Dr. Fokes? Are, are you presenting on this or are we? I'm not sure.
Yes, Dr. Fokes is, I asked Dr. Fokes to, um, present on this and it really is to focus on a couple of items, our, our teachout reports, which we touched on briefly, as well as our functional, um, maps. Um, so I will turn it over to, uh, Dr. Fokes. Thank you for being here and sitting through our, our business of the day.
Good evening, everyone, and I do enjoy sitting through the business because I can see how functional you really are and how open and polite you are with one another. And it warms my heart to see the way that the district is, um, dealing with all these important things. So Sasha, do you have the PowerPoint or do you want me to share it?
I have it. I can share it. I can, it's up right now. One sec.
Thank you, Mai.
Thank you, Mai.
You're welcome.
So, um, good evening and I, I just always, I want to thank the board members for the work that you do. Uh, it goes unsung so many times for being so willing to, uh, look over a district with so many students and, um, keep track of all of these details. So I know again, it's close to bedtime here, so I'm just gonna let you know. On the very, very top level, um, that report that we'll be sending to the ACCJC this week, hopefully with your approval, is, um, on requirements one and two that were mostly fiscal and au- audit, um, associated. We are in progress or partially met. On, um, the financial aid requirement, which was a big one, we are in progress and we expect to have it resolved by July next year, June, July next year. The board requirements, which were four, five, and seven, we are definitely in progress. And with all of the work that you've done on your goals and the board retreats and, um, just the, the kind of work that you're doing and the way you're documenting it, we're definitely in progress and showing great strides there. On board and CEO requirements six and nine, the first one was to evaluate the CEO. You both updated the board policy and did the evaluation, so that standard is met. Um, this next one is authority, uh, delegating authority to the CEO and, um, the evidence that I was able to pull for the report shows that you've done a great job of doing that and we're calling that standard met. Um, the next section was on policy and functions. Um, and so we had a requirement to regularly review the board policies, which is that one that you were just discussing, 4.1, where the board policy provides the delegates the authority to the CEO to change procedures, APs, as deemed necessary, which is what's happened here in order to meet the standard. And then on, um, number 10, this is the one that we'd like to talk to you with a little bit more, uh, detail about. It has to do with delineating and explaining the functions that occur when you've got four colleges in one district. We met the basic part of the standard, but the work that the college and colleges in the district are doing are tremendous. We are also asking for your approval on the teachout plans, which are, um, very detailed examples of every program at every college and where that student in that program could go in order to finish their education should accreditation, um, be pulled from the institutions, which we do not expect. At least my experience with looking at the great evidence you've got, um, you all are doing a terrific job in meeting those requirements. So I'd like to talk to you a little bit about this number 10, if you would go to the next slide, please. One of the, um, specific things they talked about was something called a functional map. And these are quotes directly out of the peer team reports that came in March and you received in June. And I, I am going to read just the red, um, lettering for you. The peer team found that there was no consistency on which operational responsibilities and functions are owned. That leads to some of the issues that you saw in the internal controls. But also on the next paragraph, there was confusion about delineation of functions and responsibilities. And so the, um, ACCJC suggested that what you need to do is establish clear delineation of functions and responsibilities and then consistently apply that across all four colleges. They also said that they would like for you to document the workflow and communication processes that ensure that the district is doing its job. So next slide, please, Mai. Um, we have been working on a functional map since, uh, early August and this is a map of visuals so that you can see how we've put this map out to the colleges and to all of the participatory governance groups. We are now where that arrow is on draft two. We'll keep working on it and bring it back to you in November, um, for your approval. And what we'd like to show you right now is the kind of work that we're doing. We're looking at the functional tasks that are shared between the college and the district. And, um, we're trying to identify the person or the position where the buck stops. If something goes wrong, if the financial aid report was not correct, where does that buck stop? And then we want to talk about how we communicate and how the workflow corrects that. And we're sending it out October 1st again for another round for all of the colleges to look at the map that we've got, which is draft. It's very drafty. We're looking for input from everyone, students classified and faculty and administrators, and identify gaps and issues and needs so that the district can function smoothly and everyone knows what's happening. So very quickly, um, if you go to the next slide, I want to give you two examples that related particularly to the requirements from the ACCJC. So this is a 26-page document and that's a lot of reading. And each line gives you an example of a function such as capital outlay. And I loved those great presentations tonight about all of the building and the upkeep that you're doing so that the district is something that students can be proud of and really get a quality education in. But who does what when? And, and if something goes wrong, who's responsible for that? So what we've been working on for the last month and a half is the district roles and you can see that these are all, um, active roles that the district is responsible for. And there are different people responsible for different aspects of each of these functions that relate exactly to capital outlay. And then on the college, they have really important functions as well because that's where the work is occurring. They're the ones that can validate that the work is actually done and they can clarify with the district when there are issues and oversight that needs to be addressed on the college campus. So that, that would be your Vice President of Administrative Services that would be doing that work. So, um, this is the draft in one area. If you go to the next one, Mai, and this is my last example. Um, some of the other issues that came out in the requirements had to do with data ma- management and, um, you adopted some great data integrity work that's going on in the district that, um, is just going to put you in such a great future for looking at your data so that you have those internal controls and integrity. And so here, um, this was primarily delivered by the Chief Technology Officer. You can see that he deals with the infrastructure. But then within that infrastructure, there are all these vice chancellors in the district role that are, um, where the buck stops in monitoring and maintaining that data integrity. So the Chief Technology Officer makes it possible, but the rules that guide that data, those are developed within each one of these individual, mostly vice chancellor office areas. On the college side, um, it's more instructional technology, that's part of it, and, um, putting data into the business plans that are in the information technology. So you can see here, we've delegated what people would be responsible for those aspects. Um, I've been meeting with individual areas today. I had another wonderful meeting with Francisco and his, um, researchers talking about, um, if we take a scenario such as there's a perceived issue with that MIS data being reported to the chancellor's office, how does this map get us to the person that can help us correct it? How do we use this so we know who to communicate with? Who does the work where and when? And who's responsible for finally solving that issue? So, um, the district and the colleges are working on this. As I said, they're taking it back out, but I wanted to give you an introduction just so that you kind of understand how we're working on it. And this will then complete the requirements that we had and the suggestions in an even greater level than they requested in the peer review report. But something that every place where we worked on it in small groups, there have been people that have just said, this is what we've needed to do for so long. This is a great way for us to understand how we can work together better. So thank you for letting me explain this to you and I'll hand it back over to Chancellor Jackson.
Thank you, Dr. Fokes. Do we have any questions or Chancellor, do you have any comments?
No, I would just, um, like to thank everyone who has been a part of this process and it is a myriad of individuals, um, some of whom are represented here. Uh, but I especially want to thank, um, the Vice Chancellor of Academic Affairs and Student Success, Dr. Brown, as being our district ALO and the college ALOs for all of their work also, the, the, everybody. If I start naming names, I know I'm gonna miss someone, so I would just say, um, thanks to all of you. We could not have gotten this, um, document completed, even though we still have some things to go. It is a very honest review of our district. Um, you know, our, our good, our bad, our challenges, um, our successes. So thank you, uh, Dr. Fokes, for helping us to present that in such a way to show the progress that we've made over the last several months and over the last really, uh, couple of years. Um, so with that, I would urge the bo- the board to, uh, vote approval for this document so we can move it forward to ACCJC.
And, and I'll just say one other thing too. I just want to echo that statement. Um, looking at the reports, looking at all of the work that you've done, watching the, the fireside chatter, the town hall, um, and just even looking at this presentation here. You've taken so many, you've all taken the many, many problems that have been plaguing this district and it's become clearer and clearer the path and the, the structure to take. And I think that, uh, the hard work that you all have done as a team is so incredible. And I don't think many of us, especially the, the trustees, really have an idea, have an inkling of an idea of how much work has actually been happening behind, uh, behind the screen, behind the curtain. So just thank you all for this. We have a lot of work to do. We have a lot of work to do, um, but, but this, this progress is most certainly palpable. Yes, Trustee Bonia.
Oh, I just, I just also wanted to say thank you. I mean, it's incredible to be at this. Oh, I just also wanted to say thank you. I mean, it's incredible to be at this phase right now. And just a heartfelt thank you to everyone who participated, the college presidents, all of your teams, chancellor, district office. Oh, my gosh, right. The work has been absolutely grueling. And I just want to appreciate and just call that out. Thank you so much.
Oh, trustee Reese here on mute.
Okay, so we have the first and we have the second. We have the presentation discussion. I believe we're at roll call at this point.
Student trustee Hogan. Oh, she's gone. My apologies. Student trustee Cooper. Student trustee Cooper. Oh, I see he has his hand raised.
Sorry, wrong button. Is there not an opportunity to discuss this item in advance of voting on it?
We were just in discussion right now. I had asked for comments. Yes, would you like to put forward a comment?
Yes. For my advisory vote, I've prepared a comment on this item. I do not feel that there has been sufficient student feedback or involvement in follow-up reports, nor do I feel that there has been sufficient student feedback or involvement in the initial ISO reports. I have additionally observed a number of concerning practices and discussions in developing reports for the ACCJC and feel that language, inflammatory language frequently used around these topics like state takeover and/or suggesting that the state would ever realistically close our doors have been used to scare people into supporting what they might otherwise not. I would not recommend voting in favor of this item from an ethical or legal standpoint, nor endorse these reports as a collective. And I must urge the board to recognize that these state oversight processes exist to protect students, faculty, staff, institutions, districts, and ensure that the public's trust is upheld in our fiscal and educational responsibilities. The only people who have anything to fear from the ACCJC are upper leadership who might be replaced if found to be at the root of district or college problems. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And once again, I just want to reiterate, thank you so much for these reports and all the work that's been put forth. And it's an honest report, which I am very proud to vote for. Okay, let's finish roll call.
Student trustee Cooper.
Nay.
Trustee Withrow.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee Handy.
Yes.
Trustee Delphin Polk.
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla.
Yeah.
Trustee Napolea Bellaries.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, let us move on to the next item. 9.2.
Chair. 9.3. 9.2 was removed.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. 9.3.
Chair.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, so we've got trustee Bonilla, and then we've got a second by trustee Withrow. Discussion.
Chair, I called for your attention before those motions.
Yes.
Um, I just want to mention, I wanted to not interrupt that last item, so I held on for a minute here. But I'm seeing in the chat, if I'm not mistaken, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems as though a member of the public has been granted panelist access and is going, is having communications in the chat that the public is not privy to.
Thank you.
And individuals such as our presenter may be responding to, so this seems like a Brown Act concern to me.
Thank you, trustee. I mean, I'm sorry, Sasha, word quick. Sasha, can we please shut that down? As always, we do not have chat during our board meetings because we want to parallel what would happen in a regular board meeting. And board meetings would not have the peripheral conversations that are going on. Thank you, and thank you for calling my attention to that, student trustee Cooper.
You're welcome, chair. I just wish I could say that that was accurate and I hadn't seen it at every single meeting on some level or another that I've been privy to, but thank you.
So now I don't know where we are. We got the roll call for.
9.3.
We did a first and a second, and I need to do the roll call for 9.3.
All right.
Student trustee Cooper.
Yeah.
Trustee Withrow.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee Handy.
Yes.
Trustee Delphin Polk.
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla.
Yes.
Trustee Napolea Bellaries.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Let's do 9.4. Consider adoption of resolution number 21/22. That's correct, right. 21/2248 authorizing submission of the annual 2021 five-year capital outlay construction plan for fiscal year 2023-2027 for submission to the state chancellor's office before October 4, 2021. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, trustee Withrow. A second.
Second.
Thank you, trustee Jenkins. Discussion. Okay, seeing none. Let's do roll call.
Student trustee Cooper.
Just clarifying, we're 9.4.
Correct.
Abstain. Thank you.
Trustee Withrow.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee Handy.
Yes.
Trustee Delphin Polk.
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla.
Yes.
Trustee Napolea Bellaries.
Yes.
Yeah. Motion passes.
Great, thank you. 9.5. Consider ratification of contract agreement with parking concepts in the amount not to exceed $273,000 for parking for Berkeley City Colleges faculty, staff, administrators, and certain guests. May I have a motion?
I'm moved.
Thank you, trustee Bonilla. Second.
Second.
Thank you, trustee Jenkins. And then I see two individuals, trustee Withrow, trustee Handy, and then student trustee Cooper.
I have a conceptual problem with this. I understand the negotiations that have gone on and the intent to reduce the cost of parking. But as I read it, it leaves the governing board, the board of trustees, in a category of visitors or outsiders. And in fact, if I, it actually leaves the chancellor in a position of being an outsider or a visitor. And I got a problem with that.
Thank you, trustee Withrow. I'm not sure if we have a comment.
Point of clarification, and I see Vice President Hay here. I don't know if she can speak to this or IBC Smith. I thought that the board as well as the chancellor are covered under certain guests. Am I mistaken on that? Just a point of clarification for trustee Withrow.
I'm sorry, chancellor. Perhaps Dr. Hay can speak to this?
And I'm not trying to put you on the spot, Cooney. I just don't, I don't know. When I saw certain guests, I assumed that that would include board members, you know, publicly elected board members of the board of trustees as well as. So.
Yes, I think that that is the case from the past practice. But I'd like to make sure that that is the case to ensure that we can honor that moving forward. So if I could make sure to double check on that, that would be appreciated.
And trustee Withrow, if we could get back to you on that particular item. I wasn't aware that President Garcia was not going to be here. So I'm not trying to put you on the spot again, Cooney. And we'll get clarification back to you on that. But that was my understanding is the certain guests were under that inclusion.
Okay, that's good. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, trustee Handy and then student trustee Cooper, and I believe that's it.
Okay, I might have an answer for trustee Withrow's question. Whenever I visited that campus, when you sign in with the security person, when you come in, they validate your parking ticket. So I have, you know, whenever I've gone to that campus for anything, my parking has been covered. So that's an answer to your question. My question was, were we continuing to pay? I know it says, was it up to an amount, but were we continuing to pay for this whole time that we've been in shelter in place? And is this an anticipation of people coming back and utilizing that space? Was there any adjustments made for the year that we weren't doing any parking? That's just, it just kind of popped up in my head when I was reading. So if you have an answer, that would be nice. Thank you.
Sure. So pre-COVID, for example, 17, 18, 18, 19, and impartial 2019 year, we, the cost for the parking was, you know, on average about $450,000. When we entered into the COVID and 2021 year, the cost was $27,532. So we did not have any expenses for the parking except those folks who have worked on a face, you know, their work required to come to campus. And part of the fall of 2020, spring, partial 2020. So it has, so we have significantly reduced the amount that we have paid. The anticipation for this amount of $233,000 is that we are slowly coming back this semester, starting in October, next month, as well as spring 2022 for return. So that is estimated about $20,000 to $25,000 a month for 12 months is our estimation. And then pre-COVID, the full-on amount was roughly $30,000 to $35,000, I mean, $1,000 a month. That amounts to about $400,000. So it is, so we had pre-COVID, and then during COVID, we went down. And then we're estimating based on that calculation from the past cost.
Thank you. Thank you, Cooney.
Thank you for that, student trustee Cooper.
Hey there. I was wondering, I had two questions. I was wondering if student feedback or involvement had been incorporated into the development of this? And I was wondering if any parking is allotted to students? For example, parking for their student president or parking for those with physical accessibility needs?
We are continuing to practice what we have always practiced before. So we didn't have any, this is like reinstating in preparation for, you know, returning to campus process. So in that, we are just continuing to do our practice that has existed in the past. And then all students pay, I believe, yeah, all students pay for the parking.
I'm sorry, I wasn't quite clear on that. What are the processes that you were saying are continuing? That you'll be continuing to practice?
Like who pays and then who are covered in this cost? It's been pre-existing, pre-pandemic. And so we are simply continuing that practice of what we have been doing and then reestimating the amount that we need to pay for 21, 22.
Okay, and I'm understanding that in this, the faculty are covered in their parking?
Yes.
But as far as my inquiry about there being any of this parking available to students with significant accessibility needs or the student president, that would be a no?
Would this be something that you'd like to get back to us after you've talked to President Garcia?
Yes, and then, yeah, I'd like to get back to you on those two points.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
I do.
Yes.
Oh, President Reese, what I wanted to say is parking is a problem in Berkeley, period. And people are discouraged from driving in. That's why we went to great efforts to get the student bus pass. Unfortunately, with students not, with having these minimum votes for elections, students who have cars and basically privileged were able to vote down the bus pass. And it's going to be a serious issue when students start to come back and find out that they don't have that. Bus, it's very expensive to take the bus, and most of the students are not driving cars anyway. And I really think we have to have a minimum amount of votes in some of these major elections because many of the students just don't know. I mean, you can say, we put it on the website, we sent out messages. They don't see that. They come, they go. They're not looking for all of that. And when they get there, they're going to find that these decisions were made that are not in their best interest, and it's going to impact enrollment. So I don't think we need to just jump up and say we're going to allocate parking spaces to whatever without, I think that's a question that that college should have. And whether their students want that or not, or if their students are even driving in, because more than likely, they're not. It's just not. It's just not the situation where you want to do that's not affordable. It's, and it's not sustainable. So I'm hoping that we can revisit these elections around the bus passes. I mean, we worked really hard to make that happen for our students. And it was a very, very small amount of people who were able to say, oh, this is not, this is not important. And one of the students that actually spoke up about it is, you know, was an international student that drives a BMW and was saying, oh, well, the bus passes were expensive. That's what the students brought to me last week, they were saying. And I think that we really have to be careful about that because it really impacts everything. And students with a bus pass can use it every day for 30 days. They can go wherever they need to. It really helps them with their work and getting their children to school and everything else. So we're not going to get more spaces in Berkeley, but what we can do is try to get the buses passed for those, bus passes back for those. Thanks.
That's an excellent point. Thank you, trustee Handy. Thank you, thank you. Okay, let's move on to 9.6.
Oh, I need to do roll call first.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Student trustee Cooper.
I'm gonna abstain from this one just in lack of feedback that I've gotten about what the students would wish me to do on this.
Okay. Trustee Withrow.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee Handy.
Yes.
Trustee Delphin Polk.
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla.
Yes.
Trustee Napolea Bellaries.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, let's go to 9.6. Consider approval of amendment number two to the contract for routine maintenance with opening technologies to extend the term of the contract for a third year and approve the $764,605 contract price for the extended term of the contract to ensure Laney College compliance with American with Disabilities Act, ADA, requirements addressed in the Payne versus Peralta amended consent decree. That was a mouthful. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Thank you, trustee Withrow. Thank you, trustee Bonilla.
You can turn mine into a second.
Okay. Discussion. Trustee Handy. Or is that a latent hand? Trustee Withrow.
You know, this is the sort of thing I think we need to give feedback to our people in the assembly and the state senate. We're talking, in order to comply with. in order to comply with this facet of the ADA and whatever, the expenditure is seven hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars, which is a chunk of change. How many, how many students are we actually looking at in the standpoint of providing this coverage? How many ADA students, ADA type students do we have uh going to Laney?
Um.
Berkeley, Berkeley. Uh, Laney, I'm sorry.
This is, and, and thank you for that, trustee Withrow, but this, this is an incredibly important uh legal and um philosophical and practical requirement that we absolutely, absolutely must meet.
That wasn't, that wasn't my issue. And I'm, I'm moved to approval and will vote for approval. But it's the sort of thing that we need to give feedback to our elected officials that are making these laws, uh what they're doing. That's all. I may have gone forward.
Okay, uh, a theory, but Vice Chancellor, interim Vice Chancellor Smith.
Uh, thank you, trustee. Um, trustee Withrow, I would like to put your mind at ease. I can only speak for our district in um this particular instant, but I would say this is our third and final year, but I would say every year we have had a rollover because we did not spend the entire amount. Um, and we then just add what we need to for the amount that was not, that was not previously spent. But because of the uh consent decree, we do have to set aside those funds every year. But please know that there is a substantial amount of money that has been left over each year, and we roll it over into the next year to meet our obligation.
Great. Thank you very much.
Student trustee Cooper? Did we lose you?
Sorry, um, just trying to collect my thoughts a bit on this one. Um, so I, I'm gonna answer the question as to how many um of these students are present at Laney or any of our campuses uh with a lot. And you, usually I'm pretty, pretty fixed on, on, on strict objectivity, but that's pretty objective. There's a lot of us. Um, uh, the quote-unquote ADA whatever um is also uh one of the things that most commonly gets us into some of the biggest legal trouble. Um, so that's a factor. Um, and then lastly, um, in the event that there somehow wasn't a lot of us in the school, um, I would, I would say that that only would raise the question as to why are there not a lot of students uh covered by ADA law in the school? Maybe it's not an accessible enough space. So that's not the case with us, but there could be zero, and it wouldn't change anything about our legal requirements to meet ADA clock compliance, if not uh our ethical responsibility to see wherever we can go beyond uh basic compliance. Thank you all.
Thank you. Shall we vote? I don't see any other hands raised. All right, roll call, please.
Student trustee Cooper?
Yeah.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Delfin Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Bonia?
Yeah.
Trustee Napolea Villarice?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, uh, let us move on to ten point one. Board of Trustees reports. Um, let's start with our student trustee. Student trustee Cooper, do you have a report?
Sorry, I forgot that I was um, was alone here today. Um, I, blessings to my colleague. I uh, I, I hope they're well right now. Um, yes, uh, for my report, and again, I'm a bit foggy today. Does not comply, combine well with my multiple neurodivergences, so forgive me if I'm a little scattered here, please. Um. Okay, so I got a two, two-part report here. Um, I, I, I myself um am routinely challenged by constant obstructions and um negligence to the role of a student trustee and a student president within the district. I need to call upon the board to allow me to submit agenda items for reasonable consideration uh, and uh, and addition to our agendas uh without the stated expectation for it to be sponsored by another board member or some sort of specialist in accordance with the BP two-three-four-zero and corresponding AP two-three-four-zero that we review before each and every meeting as I am a member of this board. Um, I need to call upon the board and the chancellor's office to respond to my repeated requests for information and discussion of concerns reported to me by my peers, the students, um, or observed in the course of my work. I need to call upon the board to respond proactively to my repeat efforts to address issues by seeking ways that we can work together over rebuttals and mischaracterizations of my requests, work, or correspondences. It is up to you to address the culture of confrontation and quote-unquote broken board culture uh that has been repeatedly cited um uh for, uh, within Peralta um for, for more, uh, excuse me, to address the culture of confrontation um and, and broken board culture that Peralta has repeatedly been cited for through more logical means than suggesting that some quote-unquote disgruntled student representative is the source of it, which would be a pretty tech, clear case of textbook gaslighting. Additionally, I wanted to echo um, my concern uh for what's going on with uh Laney's kerf fundings. Um, I am concerned about the absence of Peralta delegates uh serving at the SSC because I'll tell you what, I know at least two boards who have students who want to be delegates. Um, but the advisors are the gatekeepers, so I'll just encourage folks to look into that subject. Um, and uh, a concerningly came to my attention recently. Um, and I can't believe I didn't no- notice this sooner. Um, but uh, I, I think it can be said that equity at, at Peralta can readily exclude LGBTQ plus students uh as our student success and equity committee. All of their presentations, their data, the, the information that they process to figure out uh how to spend their funds, direct their focuses, and what to work on are exclusively binary gender data and make no citation of any other uh orientation, attraction, sexuality-based identity whatsoever. We are utterly invisible in this district as far as anywhere that I can see in systems data. I'm really appreciative and do not want to take away from the credit of those who have independently uh sought to make community space and, and progress uh for LGBTQ plus uh community members in Peralta. Um, but I really need to call on the district and each individual college uh to make sure that they are sourcing and posting demographic data that can accurately identify the successes and hardships of LGBTQ plus individuals. Um, I, 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 I'll just make a final note in closing that it, that it both upset me and broke my heart to the point that I, I actually bit my tongue on this one this week when I asked, why do we still not have um uh, any, any more expansive data than these binary sets and, and no greater uh, you know, list of students orientations? And it was explained to me then additional bar would be confusing for people. I don't think anyone would dare say that, nor ever should they about our beloved Pacific Islander population or our indigenous and Native American communities, which are very small little slivers on our demographic data too. And we know that that is priceless data. So I don't see how we are looking at this as anything else uh but more priceless data. So let's please uh investigate how to follow up on this and broaden the focuses of our equity data. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, student trustee Cooper. Let's go to trustee Withrow and her reports on what you've done in the past couple of weeks. You'll be going somewhere soon.
Well, rather than getting into that sort of thing, I would like to state that this has been an excellent meeting. It's been an excellent agenda. And uh, I say that because I, I think we're all going through a process of learning a great deal more about our educational institution. And um I think there's been a tremendous improvement in communication. And I think there's a lot more confidence in our ability to achieve our mission. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Withrow. Trustee Jenkins?
So I'm not gonna steal her thunder, but I had the pleasure, uh, and I don't think we spoke about this last meeting, but on September twelfth, I had the pleasure of recording our own trustee Handy throwing out the first pitch at the A's game. Um, she made it to home plate, and she represented proud to well. So I look forward um to hearing her speak about her uh first pitch that reached home plate.
Trustee Handy?
Okay, Kevin, you got me. I owe everything to a six-year-old Pop Warner pitcher who taught me, he took me out and showed me how to throw the ball. He was so disappointed in my abilities that he said, Nana, just do your best and have some fun. But thanks to him, I was able to get the ball over the plate. It was a celebration of Peralta Day at the foundation, um, Peralta Foundation at the A's game. And um, it was, it was pretty incredible. And um, I also thank the A's for the uh money that they committed to our foundation over a period of years. I think the last time we went there, the check was for a hundred thousand dollars, and I believe it was for over a four-year period. And the money is really important, and that segues into um my next thing. I've, I've been contacted um by a couple of students. Um, last week, um, one of our former students um contacted me with some um vouchers, food vouchers, hundred-dollar vouchers. And he said, I know that you can find um people who need them, so I was kind of putting the word out for students. And in doing so, I, I got to meet a student um at one of the colleges. And what struck me was this student was, was, is living in her car um and working at night so that she could pay for hotel rooms. And if, I know that we have a lot of, of funds to help students with food insecurities and house, housing insecurities. But it was difficult for me. I couldn't just say right off the top, the tip of my um tongue where to go, but I was able to, again, contact members at the dip, at the colleges, and they helped her work her through. But I, I just want people to keep that in mind. Um, as we get in our, you know, we're still able to get in our cars and, and some of us are still employed. But many of our students, they don't have that extra money. They're not getting extra stipends for showing up. And I don't know if it's, even though we put it on the website and put information out, it still doesn't mean that the students could find that. And that's where I think we have to do a better job. And I'm not saying that we're doing a bad job. It's just that for some of us that are putting things on the website or whatever, we know how to navigate. But for a student who's coming to us new, they may not even know that that thing may be on the website. They don't know about the foundation. I was talking with families who have funded um who, who have a, an endowment through the foundation, but they've not been able to identify the students of a particular social activism um major that they want to support. And but then when I was talking to this person who, um, when I was giving their voucher, guess what? It was a social activism um background that she was taking, and she would have been eligible for that, for that grant. So I don't know how we do this. I think we have to ask our students more about how, how do we really get the information out through all four colleges? So that when we have something to share with you, like when Boapa had funding and they wanted to give it to students, could not get any students to apply for. And it was just, come in, put your name on it. Through the foundation, we'll get it out. And yes, some of you, you know, shaking your head, yeah, I know about it, and you pass it on to the next person who passed the information out. It's not about any of us not trying. It's about we, it's about finding, how do we really communicate with the students during this time? Because it's not the same where they're gonna see each other and, you know, one's gonna tell um the next one. So we can just keep that in mind. But I did want to share something else with you all that um was a little more disturbing for me. This morning, I woke up um early with a, with a um text from one of our, one of our students, um, student that I've known for some time, and it says, trustee, I'm getting so frustrated with some of the ways our professors just don't care about us. Not a big deal, just venting. So I usually like to pretend I'm not up, not responding at that hour, but I had to. And I asked what was going on, and it, and it said, it's a personal issue. They missed a deadline for a class. Now, this is a class that's been in session. It's, we're now in the second, second week. And the student needed more time and wrote the instructor asking for more time. Did not get a response back and woke up this morning and found that he'd been dropped. And now he's scrambling to find another class so that he doesn't reach, you know, the minimums. And then, and then he's still trying to figure it out, and he's wrote to me, he says, well, maybe after listening to you all this evening, talking about, you know, the, the bots, the phony registrations, he's wondering if maybe the, maybe in, in our quest to try to eliminate the fake students that somehow um the, the sweep took him out to and others because it was a huge drop. Because when he went to chat, that class itself did not have, it had sixteen out of thirty-five students, so it didn't even have half of the students needed a maximum for that class. So if there's something going on, and the other thing that I found was disturbing, I said, well, did you call the instructor? But because of Canvas, they can write, but the, the instructor never responded to them. They have no other way of responding to the instructor, whereas if we were in person, they would go up and they would talk to them. So I mean, if you're in the second week and you turn in your first assignments, and then you miss the second assignments, but you've already written, and then you find that you're dropped, I think we can do better. But I don't know how. But I just wanted to share with you that our students are struggling. And their opinion of us is all that matters. Whether we think we're doing a great job or not, when a student says to me in the morning, you know, early in the morning, feeling and heartfelt that I don't think they care about us, then we need to do a, a chat. We all need to do a chat. So thank you. That's all I have to share tonight.
Thank you for that, trustee Handy. Trustee Bonia?
Please. Yes, thank you. Um, so I have a couple of updates. One, um, these are not just updates. This is a comment. I want to send a heartfelt uh get well to President Garcia um as she's recovering from um not being well. But I also want to congratulate her on her nomination and selection as Aspen fellow. That's amazing. Amazing for her, amazing for her campus, and amazing for all the students um impacted by this. So that's um just a big congratulations. And Mary, you go, President Johnson, in your nursing program, right? I mean, that was just, hey. That's amazing. Um, I, I can't remember where you ranked, but it was just high up and high enough for um, for others to notice. Um, and so that's, that's just, it's just good news all the way around for um students who are pursuing the nursing program. Um, Laney and COA HRTP, was that, was that it? Um, President Besikov, right? High Road Trading Partnership Program. Sounds amazing. Advancing apprenticeship, yes. Uh, you know, students are just going to um, just, it, it's just a two, a true testament to serving students um in their education and training pathways. So um, congratulations to all of you um as this impacts um in a very positive way the lives of our students. Um, I also want to share with you, I came across some very interesting news. How many of you know Um, I also want to share with you, I came across some very interesting news. How many of you know? That Laney has a Laney Masters Swim Team. Show of hands. Oh, I got a couple. Okay, alright, alright, a few people know. Um, and so they were named this year as the National Swim Team of the Year by the US Masters Swimming Association. Ah, right, hey, amazing. But here's, here's the sad thing. They haven't been able to swim at Laney. It's shut down. The pool is closed. My heart breaks for them. Not only does my heart break for them, but my heart breaks for all their swim programs and all the little tykes that were no longer serving at the Laney Swimming Pool. So I'm gonna, this is a special plea uh to the chancellor and her team. Um, to provide an update to the community as soon as possible. There are so many folks out there, students. Little kids, part of swimming programs, older folks like the Laney Masters Program. Who are all waiting to hear and they know, you know, I've heard from some of my constituents, hey, you've opened up the athletic field. You've got your football program back up and running. You got your athletic field open. What's up with the Laney Pool? Um, so folks want to know and I want to help advocate for them because. They're, they're struggling and they're being bounced around to different facilities. Um, so with that. Um, I will end my sharing and um, wish everyone a good evening.
Thank you, trustee Bonia. Trustee Delphine Poke?
Um, I will pass this time. Thank you.
Great. Um, and then I just have an announcement to make on Thursday, September thirty, so in two days. And I'm hoping many um of our individuals at the district can attend. There is a DEI in action talk from. Uh, DI in action. It's a webinar series. It's a town hall uh from equity talk to equity walk. And it's happening on Thursday from six o'clock to seven o'clock. So, or seven thirty. So it's short, it's quick. Um, I think it's going to be. Very helpful. It should be very engaging with some tools. And the last time there was a town hall series on this, both the chancellor and I attended. And we got some great information from it. And I think that the more we attend, the more we learn from what others are doing. The more we can inculcate and implement it into our own district. Um, the second thing. I would say, you know, kind of going back to what trustee Handy had just said, I know that at the SAC with Vice Chancellor Brown, we've been talking about. This, this problem. How do we engage students? How do we actually reach and access students, especially in the past eighteen months, right? That's been, that's been the question of the day. It's been very, very difficult. Um, and I, as I think about what um. Trustee Handy just said, it, it forces us and compels us to really kind of reflect on and think about. What is happening at the, in the classroom? What's happening at the ground level? How are we not reaching them? You know, we're, we're doing the functions of the board. Where we are, but a lot of times we don't know exactly how this is trickling down. What we've talked about at SSAC and we talked about it with the chancellor and at some point soon, maybe we can start doing it is having um either. Uh, both at one point or another, having a student present or having a, a person in the classroom, like a faculty member present so that we know. More genuinely, uh, more personally, what is actually happening in the classroom from the student's perspective? Um, and also from the support staff perspective and all and or from the faculty perspective. Because I think that's that kernel, that's that seed or that grain that we're not seeing. Um, I love listening to the presidents, but you know, we could, we could go a couple layers deeper and I think that that would be helpful to us. Um, and then that would be, that's my last comment. Um, and again, I can't say this enough. Just thank you to. The whole team, everybody at the district who's put in so much effort um for the ACCJC reports. The visit's coming up very soon. Um, and then we will be doing more work afterwards, but just thank you for, for that. Um, I am going to turn it into, turn it over to Deanna for comments. Yeah, uh, we have announcements, I'm sorry, announcements, yes.
Um, we have one announcement. Um, on Monday, October fourth at ten AM, please join Chancellor Jackson and her cabinet for a town hall webinar. To discuss our safe return to campus plans and actions. This webinar will provide important updates for employees and students regarding the vaccination policy. Campus facilities and public safety updates and time for answering your questions. The webinar will be ninety minutes from ten AM to eleven thirty AM. Visit the Peralta website for Zoom details and that's all I have. And happy Latinx heritage month to everyone.
Thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful evening and we will see you in two weeks, I believe. I don't have that date, but in a couple of weeks. Oh, yes, student trustee Cooper, one last comment.
Uh, yeah, I had a quick question and a quick comment. Um, uh, trustee Paul. Uh, is that uh being uh disseminated to students through their emails or is that information only to be found on the website?
I will turn that over to Mark Johnson who just put the link in the chat. I was just only supposed to read announcements for VP Gonzalez one.
Thank you.
Alright, everyone. Thank you. Good night. Be well, be safe and we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Was I, was, was that being turned over for Mark Johnson to answer?
No, it's in the chat, I believe, right?
I, I was asking if the, if it was being disseminated to the students uh if into their emails.
Mark, would you like to answer that?
Um, yes, uh, we are disseminating through our usual channels, which is posting on the website and social media.
You just froze.
So no, that it is not being sent to their emails, as I inquired?
Yes, it is. It is being sent to email. It's being posted on social media and it is already posted on the Peralta website.
Okay, and, and it was, what, what day? October fourth? And, and has that email been sent out to students yet?
The email has only been sent to employees right now.
Less than a week.
And it was just, and it was just announced uh today, earlier today.
Okay, well, well, thank you very much. Uh, my, my announcement was just briefly that. I'm now uh holding office hours uh every available morning of seven days a week at nine AM. And eight AM for anyone in the Peralta community that needs me. Uh, you can reach me at my listed emails or five hundred. Or five one zero, five hundred, five eight nine five.
Right.
Thank you all for your time and have a great day.
Good night, everyone. Let us adjourn the meeting. Adieu. Bye-bye.
Thank you.